The mic on. You have to see the light on so you can talk. The light comes on, you can talk, press it.
All right, I think we're going to get started. Welcome back. Per state law, we are in person again. Per the city manager's building rules through June 14th is there is a mask policy. We're going to start this morning with our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Our invocation will be led by Reverend Diane Davies of First Unitarian Church of Oklahoma City, and then our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Bradley Carter of Ward One. Please stand.
Spirit of life, God of many names and of no name, on this morning gathered once again in person as these city leaders, the mayor, city officials, members of the council, meet to do the sacred work of governance. We pray that their words and actions may reflect a true commitment to justice, equity, and compassion. May their decisions be based in a recognition of the worth and dignity of every person, but may they especially remember those who are at the margins of our society whose voice is too often silenced. Spirit of justice, for the sake of those they are called to represent and serve, may they, on this day and every day, recommit themselves to the right of conscience and the use of the democratic process. And may we all remember that despite our conflicts and our divisions, we are all interconnected. We are all one. May it be so. In the name of all that is holy and good, and in the power of courageous love, we pray. Amen.
My pledge leads to the law of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one mission, the power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I call this meeting of the city council to order, and we do have some items from office of the mayor. I'm going to handle those from the front, and so I'll make my way down there. We're going to have a citation and a resolution. Maybe we'll start with our friends from the Small Business Continuity Program, and that's a big group. Everybody come on up here, though. Our city's recent sales tax check is validation that our economy is making a robust recovery, and that is in no small part thanks to the efforts of this city partnering with lots of great folks here in this community represented today, and we'll hear more from them in a moment. And we wanted to kind of take a moment as we came out of this pandemic and transitioned into our return to normalcy to honor those who helped us return to economic normalcy. And so to learn a little bit more about what this group of people meant to Oklahoma City, I would ask the clerk to read this citation, and then also, I believe we have a video we're going to run after that. But first, Amy?
Whereas First Fidelity and American Fidelity are longtime financial services providers in the Oklahoma City area, and to City of Oklahoma City employees and residents. And whereas in March 2020, the city engaged with First Fidelity for the initial development, and with American Fidelity for website and online application development for the Small Business Continuity Program to get much-needed disaster assistance to local small businesses amid the earliest and disorienting days of the rapidly evolving coronavirus pandemic. And whereas First Fidelity and American Fidelity provided these services at no cost to the City of Oklahoma City and its residents. And whereas the American Fidelity team worked nights and weekends to develop the website and meet critical city timelines, and upon program deployment, worked in real time with city staff to help applicants even working directly with them when necessary. And whereas First Fidelity took over application review in the second round of emergency assistance funding, along with payment and distribution of tax forms at minimal cost to the city and its residents, while also in many cases providing help for applicants who needed guidance to gather documentation. And whereas the website team continued to work nights and weekends to seamlessly adapt to program modifications, including expansions to specifically serve performance venues and minority-owned businesses. And whereas American Fidelity and First Fidelity were model partners, always willing to go above and beyond and provide expertise and insight. And whereas the Small Business Continuity Program and its partner programs helped over 1,000 businesses with about $37.5 million in emergency support, benefiting more than 6,800 local employees. And whereas among many who deserve special recognition are First Fidelity's Steve Hart and American Fidelity's Martin Nance, Ian Pugh, and Greg Cook, who were always saying they just wanted to help our community when it needed it the most. Now therefore, I, David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby commend and recognize the incredible achievements of American Fidelity and First Fidelity for their exemplary service to Oklahoma City residents to help rescue businesses in crisis during the COVID-19 pandemic, keeping wages and benefits flowing to residents who depend on them.
Thank you, Amy, and I guess we'll roll that video as well.
At the beginning of the pandemic, the Alliance began working with the Chamber of Commerce and city staff to try to develop programs to help small businesses weather the impacts of COVID-19. We couldn't have done it without the help of American Fidelity and First Fidelity. They were crucial to the success of the program, and we appreciate their ability to help us develop a website, create the platform to take applications, to upload financial information in a confidential way. We really just can't thank them enough for all their help.
The Small Business Continuity Program would not have happened without First Fidelity Bank. They were an incredible partner that came to the table and brought a solution for our online application. That sounds simple. It wasn't.
That was a tremendous partnership, really focused on a segment of the small business ecosystem in Oklahoma City that needed special help.
Without the Alliance stepping up to coordinate and implement, execute programming that would finance small businesses on the east side like ourselves and even throughout the city, really sustained our abilities to be in business. So just want to give a shout out to American Fidelity and First Fidelity for your support of the program. In essence, it kept us alive, and so we're extremely appreciative.
We would not be here. We would have had to close our doors and let go all the staff that we had tried so hard to save and keep their jobs in place. And so when you're handed a lifeline like that in a way that allows us to preserve jobs, but also people's economic viability to be able to pay their bills and pay for food, that's a really powerful thing.
I think they had no idea what they were getting into when they took this on, but they made a real difference in a lot of small businesses, and that's important, and we really appreciate it.
We would just like to thank First Fidelity, when you go out of your way and actually volunteer your time to help people like us who are trying to keep small businesses alive. That is such a wonderful thing, and so from the bottom of my heart and from Pivot, we thank you.
I want to thank the team at First Fidelity so very much for all that you did to make that program work. You literally saved businesses, you saved jobs, you saved this city. So thank you for being a part of this extraordinary and unique pandemic response, and I can't thank you enough. Thank you, thank you, thank you on behalf of the people of Oklahoma City. We have partners that made that program possible up here. We've got folks from the Chamber of Commerce, we've got folks obviously from the Alliance for Economic Development, we've got our city staff that works on these issues, but obviously we're most grateful to those who really volunteered to do this, and that's American Fidelity and First Fidelity. And we have with Steve Hart, who's maybe going to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Holt. We appreciate this, and just really want to say our whole team at First Fidelity Bank and American Fidelity and the Alliance and the folks from the city came together to help. We knew we needed to give back to the community. We felt compelled to help our local small businesses, and between the program from the Oklahoma City Small Business Continuity Program, as well as a similar program for the county where it helped, you know, local businesses survive these challenging times and give back with about $40 million in stimulus funds. So we were proud to be able to help out the local community and help our local small businesses survive and flourish. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody who wants to say anything? All right, well, on behalf of everybody here, on behalf of the City of Oklahoma City, the people of Oklahoma City, thank you. And let's show our appreciation one more time. All right, Eric, you want to come up? I like it, I like it. I assume these people work in your department. That's good, that's good. Well, Eric, you are, well, pending passage of this resolution, you are our employee of the month, but we want to learn a little bit more about you, and so I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Eric Nazem has been a city employee for six years and is the print shop manager in the Public Information and Marketing Department. And whereas Eric oversees the production of more than 5 million copies and processes more than 400,000 pieces of incoming and outgoing mail annually. And whereas Eric works to make sure all print requests are understood and the product is not only delivered on time but is of the highest quality possible. And whereas Eric has upgraded and transformed the print and mailroom operations and equipment to ensure city staff receives the best quality products and customer service. And whereas Eric also improved efficiencies and productivities through the implementation of the Print Shop Pro software program that allows employees to place print orders from their desk. And whereas Eric continually researches new and better opportunities to serve city departments through his membership with the Inplant Printing and Mailing Association. And whereas this council desires to recognize Eric Nazem for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the City of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Eric Nazem, June 2021 South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
This is a great reflection of your service, and you are a great reflection of our amazing 4,800 city employees. Why don't we adopt this resolution, and then maybe we'll hear a few words from you. So if you guys will, this will be a good test of the prime gov system here. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. I would like to vote aye. Sorry, we're kind of using you as a guinea pig here, Eric, but. So you've been with the city for? Yeah. I don't know how this is going to go. It could be a dispute over whether this is going to pass or not. Passes unanimously. You are the employee of the month. Well, Eric, we'd love to hear a few words from you if you have a second.
Thank you. First, I just want to thank the South Oklahoma City Kiwanis and mayor and council for this honor. Oklahoma City has been my home for the majority of my life, and so I've come and gone a couple of times, but always seemed to come back. It's a great place to live, and I'm happy to be part of, you know, the system that makes it a great place to live. First of all, I want to thank my wife for always being in my corner, and Veronica and Kristi in Public Information and everybody up in that office for always, you know, supporting us downstairs, and especially my staff, Stephanie and Julie and Ian, our temporary worker, for doing their job so well, makes me look good and helps me do my job so well. And so I'm just very honored to be here and to get this award, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's show our appreciation, Eric, one more time. Okay, the remaining item on office of the mayor is item 3B, and is appointments to the Trails Advisory Committee. If we want to take a motion on that, you can go do so virtually. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Oh, he stepped out. Now we have item four, Journal of Council Proceedings. We have items A and B we could take with one motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now we are at request, item five, requests for uncontested continuances. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We have several this morning. All of these items that I'll list will be stricken from the agenda, beginning on page 15, item 9J1, dilapidated structures, item C 1116, Southwest 37th Street, the owner has removed, item E 10204, Northeast 55th Street, the owner has removed. Again, on page 15, item 9K1, unsecured structures, item A 4, Alexis Court, the owner is secured, item E 9401, Regal Lane, to re-notify for a new owner, item I 1424, Northwest 17th Street, the owner is secured, item K 901, Northwest 31st Street, the owner is secured, item L 1104, Southwest 38th Street, the owner is secured, item N 632, Southwest 46th Street, re-notify for dilapidated, item O 2616, Southwest 51st Street, the owner has secured, item on, item 9L1, abandoned buildings, item A 4, Alexis Court, the owner is secured, item E 9401, Regal Lane, to re-notify for new owner, item H 1424, Northwest 17th Street, the owner is secured, item I 901, Northwest 31st Street, the owner is secured, item K 632, Southwest 46th Street, to re-notify for dilapidated, and item M 10204, Northeast 55th Street, the owner is removed. That's all the items I have.
Okay. Now we've got item six, revocable permits. We have item A, revocable permit with Perry Publishing and Broadcasting Company for Juneteenth 2021. I don't know that we've got anyone signed up to speak, so Councilwoman Nice, you want to handle this? Oh, please come forward. State your name and address.
Just for not signing up to please speak. My name is Condon Neal with Perry Publishing and Broadcasting, and I believe this is our 12th year doing our Juneteenth Festival. Last year, we didn't do it. The year before, we did it at Douglas Park, and so we bring it back to Washington Park. Fun, food, and family, so it was a good time.
Absolutely, yeah. I've been several times. Thank you. Councilwoman Nice, do you want to?
I do invite everybody to come out.
All right. Well, with that, I will move for approval.
Got a motion and a second? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. See y'all out there.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through I we could take with one motion. Got a motion and a second? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCMF A and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A through E, but we do have a presentation on item D, correct?
Yes, sir. On item D, we have a presentation. Brett Bryant, our finance director, is going to be out here in a minute and give us a quick presentation on this agreement. While he's on his, making his way out here, this is an amendment to our agreement, the Use License Agreement with the Thunder, and it addresses two issues. One is with the Blue and their inability now to play in the, what was previously the Cox Center where Prairie Surf Media is now, and it will also allow us to be able to provide some relocation expenses for them on this. And then there is also some changes in the agreement for the operation of Chesapeake. Brett, go ahead and come on up. For the Chesapeake Arena because of the fact that Thunder couldn't have fans this year, and they had a reduced season, so I'll let Brent explain the details of it.
Yes, sir. Here on item D, there are two issues that caused for, or the cause of this addendum and this amendment. The first one is the relocation of Oklahoma City Blue from the former Cox Division Center. When we entered an agreement with Prairie Surf, Prairie Surf Media that we had to relocate the Blue, and as a result of that, we had one year remaining on the license agreement. Originally, we thought the relocation cost was going to be around $130,000, but as a result, talking with the Blue, we were able to reduce that down to $62,900, and per our agreement with PSM, I believe they will pay half that cost, or they will reimburse us half that cost. The second part of the addendum relates to the COVID impacts of the Thunder for the remainder of the '20 season and the '20-21 season. Under their existing licensing use agreement... Under, under their existing license, licensing use agreement, the Thunder is responsible to pay all the reimbursables or for all the game day expenses back to ASM, which is our, which is our service provider at the Chesapeake. That, per our contract or per our agreement, it was around, initially around $28,000. It has grown over the year, over years, so it's closer to $42,000 per game. It's essentially a pass-through. With no fans in the stands, we basically, the cost is around $10,000 to have a game for setup and do all the things there. So all we're seeking to do with this amendment here is to reflect that was the cost for that, for this time period, which would, which would be March 11th or after the infamous Utah Jazz game there going forward to the end of this season. In addition to that, the, the Thunder pay license use fee per game that was initially around $12,000 per game to the Oklahoma City Public, to the ASM, which then helped support the operations at ASM. As a result of having no fans in the stands, again, we felt it was reasonable to lower that to a more, to a more reasonable fee. And so we lowered that, we negotiated that at to around $2,100 per game. Again, game day expenses went down just dramatically from 43 down to around 10. And so we, we tried to reduce the license fee proportionally to that, too. So, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Brett. All right, so we've got Items A through E on the PPA agenda we could take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC PPA and reconvene the council, where we find ourselves on page three of your printed agenda, Item 7, The Consent Docket. And I'm told there are no scheduled presentations, but is there any item that a council member wishes to pull out just for separate comment or separate vote?
Yes, I need to recuse myself from AV, V as in Victor, because it pertains to my main source of employment.
Okay. Do a separate vote on that, okay?
Also, Item B as in boy, A.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to make mention, NAU.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Just to hear a bit more about the project under 7BD as in boy and Danny.
Okay.
And then same as well for BF and that project there.
Did you say, what did you say? BF?
BF, Boy Frank.
Okay.
And I believe that is all for me. Thank you so much.
Okay. Why don't we start with the separate vote? Councilwoman Hammond, you want to step out? So this will be seeking a motion on Item 7AV separately from the consent docket.
Before we, I'd like to have discussion on that before we vote. I'm just curious to know pertaining to some of the organizations, how we can work through adding other, other groups pertaining to Community Health Centers of Oklahoma, Guiding Right Incorporated, into some of our areas for this continuum of care. I'm not sure how that works, so that's why I'm bringing it up now.
You're just wanting more information on it or how we could?
How we can add other organizations and groups.
Jared is here, Jared Shaded is here and can speak to the process that we have is when we do the selection.
Okay.
If him meant to come out, if not, it may be Jeff Butler.
I think the, I suspect the TVs they're watching are on a pretty significant delay.
Yes, a significant delay.
There we go.
We got to get practice at this again.
Well, as we wait, I'll just say again, I know they work with some of these organizations, but at the same time, I know some of those, these same organizations have reached out asking how they can independently be a part of this process, so.
Jared?
Jared?
The continuum grants are permanent supportive housing only funds.
Okay.
So actually, Community Health Centers used to be a continuum program. They stopped HUD, stopped allocating funds for services only and services like what they were offering. And so that's why we moved them onto a CDVG program. Other programs, if they can provide permanent supportive housing, when we open up the application, then they have to apply. But on the other hand, continuum's different than, say, our other grant programs like Emergency Solutions Grant. That HUD has to actually offer new funds for us to be able to compete for those every year, and they don't always do that. When they do, we open it up and we have an application. Otherwise, when they don't do that, we just open this up for ranking of the current projects that are there unless one of them decides to fall out and then we reallocate. In this past year, this grant application was not open because of COVID. They just renewed them across the board.
Okay.
But if another program would like to come in and learn more about how they can provide permanent supportive housing, then we can talk to them, tell them what the requirements are, and then when the application opens up, if there's extra money that HUD's going to allocate, they can send the application, they just have to submit an application and then they come in and get heard and like the grant programs.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
All right. Well, if there's no further discussion on that item, we could consider a motion. All right, got a motion and a second. Cast your votes for Item 7AV. Passes unanimously and with an abstention. All right, or with a recusal. We can now go back through the items that folks wanted to talk about, and so we'll start, we'll take them in order, and we'll start with 7AU. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, I just wanted to make mention of this National Register nomination for the Packard Iron Building at Lincoln Park Zoo. And I know as we're doing all of the different upgrades to the zoo, it's important clearly to ensure that we are preserving our historic areas that are part of it as well. So I was very pleased when I found out that they were going to go out for this particular area to be registered under the national list. So excited to see what happens, and I'm pretty sure it's going to, to be made permanent. But if you have not seen this Packard Iron Building, I'm sure you will in the future as they are working to do a lot of upgrades again to improve the experiences at the Oklahoma City Zoo. So very excited about that. So I just wanted to make, make sure I mentioned it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll stay with you on Item BA.
Excited about this, so I see Mr. Winger's up, and I'll let you explain what's going to happen.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Eric Winger, Public Works Director. On Item 7BA, we have final plans and specifications for consideration today, and it's for residential resurfacing. This is a part of our 2017 bond program. It's going to be in an area bound by Northeast 23rd to Northeast 36th, Kelly to Martin Luther King Avenue. Estimated project cost is $3.9 million. With the receipt of bids and the award of contract to be approved by the council, we would be prepared to start hopefully later this summer, and work will proceed through the spring of 2022.
So thank you. I just wanted to, to say as we continue to do resurfacing and, and just improvements in the area, this is clearly going to be a great addition to the neighbors who reside in, in this area. So we'll try to see if we can get maybe a, a release or something out for them to, our neighbors to know that this is definitely coming to their area. Thank you so much.
All right. Item BD, Councilman Cooper?
Yes, thank you. Just looking to hear a bit more about what's coming to Ward 2's Will Rogers Gardens irrigation.
Good morning. Doug Copper, Director of Parks and Recreation, for the record. We appreciate Councilmember Cooper bringing this up. As everybody knows, Will Rogers is, is one of our cornerstone parks. It's over 100 years old, and as everything ages, you're looking at it, our infrastructure needs to be looked at and cared for and, in some cases, replaced. And as the arbor of Will Rogers Park, as trees grow and die, irrigation systems grow and die, we are finally being able to replace the complete irrigation system in Will Rogers Gardens and the arboretum. So the investment that the Community Foundation did in, in bringing back the arboretum from its 100-year growth, you know, they replaced all the historic trees that were in Will Rogers that had declined two years ago. Now we're trying to bring the irrigation system in. We've changed the gardens to have more color beds, more rotational beds, new technology. We want to also be cognizant of conserving water. We will have water sensors, rain sensors on this irrigation system. So if it rains or it's too windy, our sprinkler system, even though it may be set to come on, won't. So we aren't getting evaporation or we're not wasting it in the wind or we're not watering on top of Mother Nature. So, so we're really thrilled. Long-winded explanation, but this is long overdue to really preserve and protect one of our older parks. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You said what needed to be said, so thank you. No need to apologize for length. It's very helpful. And your, your context, I appreciate that as well. I just watched the Neighborhood Alliance history of our city's neighborhoods, and you just reminded me that Will Rogers Park was one of, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think so, one of the first four parks in the whole city? Trosper, Lincoln, Woodson, Will Rogers?
The Will Rogers, Lincoln, Trosper, and, and Woodson were the cornerstone. They're on Grand Boulevard, and our forefathers saw the need for green space. And if you think about how big those, those four parks are, we're talking hundreds of acres in size that our forefathers had the forethought to preserve and protect.
And hearing you describe the, the aging of that infrastructure within the park and why we're taking on this project, this makes a lot more sense to me. So I really appreciate that context again. So thank you, Doug. So I just wanted to hear more.
I think it's worth acknowledging, too. We did this on Zoom, but Doug's going to be retiring. He's pointed out with a smile on his face, this is his last council meeting. And so just want to acknowledge his service for the city and his leadership and let him know and let you all know publicly how much I appreciate all that he's done for our city and for our park system.
Doug? Thank you for your great service. Appreciate you all. You will be missed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. BF, Councilman Cooper?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Quite excited about this project and speaking of history, Pride Month. And to know that this historic area is receiving its long overdue street enhancement project, and it looks like we have an update on it, so I'd like to hear a little bit more, please.
Thank you, Councilman. Today, we're actually approving Amendment Number One and Change Order Number One that's going to increase the cost of the project by about $54,000. And there's a number of items that they have found in the field, either replacing some of the curbs, some of the gutter, some of the sidewalks in the area that have additional needs. And so there's also some additional ADA enhancements that are covered under this change order and amendment as a part of that work. The work is about 45% complete, and so it's proceeding pretty quickly. This is one of our Better Streets, Safer City projects. Barns, all of the sidewalk work is complete. They're currently working on Northwest 39th. The district also is, is making plans to hopefully have the parade later this year, so they're working very closely with the contractor. Although the project is not scheduled to be complete until the end of the year, we're going to make sure that, that the district is open and able to do that event, even though some of the construction will still be underway. So we're actually coordinating very closely with the stakeholders in the area for their planning purposes on that. But the project is going to proceed, and right now we're on schedule for a fall 2021 completion.
Thank you for that update. I, that was very helpful. So I just want to make sure I'm hearing that correctly. The district is working with Public Works right now to coordinate in such a way that the upcoming Fall Festival Parade they have planned can take place, even though the construction is ongoing. Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Thank you for working with them on that, and thank you for that update.
All right. Well, that concludes the items that we had pulled out for separate vote or separate discussion.
My apologies, but while we have Mr. Winger here, can we discuss BK and BL?
Okay, sure.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Both of these items are similar. We have project agreements with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation to actually complete this work. This is work that comes to us for funding, that comes to us from the ACOG grant program. We apply for different projects each, it's actually every other year application process. And these are two that met the requirements for that. So the first one, which is BK, is traffic signal detection upgrades. It's funded 100%, so there's no match by the City of Oklahoma City. The estimated cost is $436,000. And this is going to help us start to remove some of those older loop detection systems that are at intersections that are starting to fail and replace them with a more modern radar type device. And so we'll work with ODOT very closely to help gauge which of those throughout Oklahoma City. So this is a citywide project and see how many of those that we can complete. They're actually going to be working on the plans, but this is the agreement between the city and ODOT to get that work underway. Item BL is a similar item. It's for traffic left turn signal upgrades. So if you're familiar with our traffic control system in Oklahoma City, we've started upgrading the standard green left arrow with a flashing left yellow arrow. And so this is a project that's going to help convert some more of those left turns to help promote better traffic movement through some of those intersections that qualify for that type of signal upgrade. It's also the same construction cost. It's 100% funded, so there's no match by Oklahoma City. And this agreement will allow us then to work with ODOT, to have them proceed with those plans, to have the work hopefully begin later this fall and go through spring of 2022.
Is there a possibility for us to maybe give some suggestions on some of the core areas where we may see a need for maybe traffic signal upgrades or just detection in areas? Because I know that's something we've been talking about anyway.
Yes, if you, please feel free to forward me any of those recommendations that you may have, and we'll make sure that we get those to them. They're going to look at the entire city, though I want you, as we prioritize, we know areas that are not working properly, and there's also intersections that we know that will already qualify for the flashing yellow left upgrade. But if you have some additional suggestions, please send those directly to me and I'll address those.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, with that, we can take a motion to adopt the consent docket. Excluding the item previously approved. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to the Concurrent Docket, Item 8. We have Items A through L we could take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we're at Item 9, Items requiring separate votes. Item 9A is an ordinance on final hearing, was recommended for approval at 10501 East I-40 Highway going from R1 to RA. And Councilman Stone, there is, let's see, two people who've signed up, but they're all, they're both here for the applicant, and it says only need to speak if there are questions. And of course, the siding was deferred from May 25th.
Thank you, Mayor. This item was approved by, approved by the Planning Commission, also recommended approval by the staff. We did have one protest on it last week that I did do the deferment because I wanted to do a little bit of a deeper dive in it, but I definitely got all my questions answered. So unless one from the shoe has a question, I would go ahead and move for approval.
All right, let's handle that virtually. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9B is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval at 9841 Southwest 44th Street going from AA to R1. This was deferred from May 25th. And Councilwoman Young, there is someone who has, there are two people who have signed up to speak in opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we start with the opposition, please.
Okay. Kevin Purcell? Mr.? Mr. Purcell, if you would state your name and address, and then proceed.
All right. Well, I represent myself and several neighbors today. On this area outlined, on the area that makes the notch, the bottom, the three acres, they don't show the platted houses on that that I have on this. This is me. These are my neighbors I have a list of. They're all on water wells. They're all on five-acre, three-to-five-acre tracts surrounding that whole area, except to the north. And those are all RA, one acre in larger lots. What's proposed here on this is 269 homes on 77 acres. They'll be 10-foot apart. On the west side of my house, it shows here seven or eight houses on the north, seven or eight, then a road on the east side and on the west side, to get in and out of that proposed addition. It's too much. That's 1,000 people probably in them homes or more. Lot of traffic, a lot of increase. We're all on water wells. Pretty concerned, Barbara, about our situation out there. I can read you a list of names if you want them, or I can send them to you. And to our north, our neighbors at Wimberly Estates, my neighbor John, and several others feel the same way. We're not against the development, it's just the size. We'd like to see it changed to maybe RA with nicer homes, nicer-sized lots. There's a lot of these small additions being built, small home additions being built out there. I spent last weekend driving through that area. These people can afford these $160 houses, $1,000 houses, barely, but they can afford a lawnmower on a lot that's 20-foot wide for their front yard. Unkept, unmoed, some have mailboxes. I don't know how a car, someone could come visit. And some of them don't even have a mailbox. They have, like in apartments, a group of mailboxes set to the side that are two blocks away from the houses. Anyway, that's our situation out there. And like I say, we're not opposed to having neighbors. I love neighbors. I am a neighbor. But anyway, that's what we'd like to see happen.
Okay, thank you. John Leach?
Thank you, guys. I appreciate your time today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
John Leach?
My name is John Leach. I live at 3640 Clay Drive in Yukon. I'm an adjacent homeowner on the north side of this proposed development. I, too, am concerned about the lot size and that all of our neighborhood is one acre to, mine's about two-and-a-half acre, the largest lot in the neighborhood, and most concerned, and we had a Zoom hearing previously, and I'm most concerned about houses being located in proximity to the creek and the auxiliary tributary. I asked for someone with a topographic exam or something to give me some idea of the flood issues that potentially exist from this creek. At my location, I have seen that creek overflow. We had a bridge built across it at one time. It destroyed that house completely. Houses in our neighborhood have been flooded, and neither the developer or the engineer has furnished any explanation of what the topographic might show regarding flooding issues. But they show auxiliary, a tributary that you can see there, and no houses are proposed along it. Well, there is a similar tributary into that creek behind my house that is not even shown on the map. I don't know if they're aware of it or not. It's in a wooded area, and I just wanted that issue of flooding addressed for proposed owners for these new houses. You can see on the plat that he furnished us first. I mean, they've got houses very close to this creek, and it is subject to flood over and over. So, my main concern is obviously the size of the project that is proposed. Secondly, flooding issues are a major concern, in my opinion, that have not been addressed. And I asked for a continuance to address this issue. No response had been received. If there are questions or concerns, I'd be proud to hear their explanation of what that situation might be.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Thank you. And we'll have the applicant.
Our war leader, and she is new, and we've had some trouble getting responses back, but I appreciate her being here and representing us with asks for some issues regarding these flood deals. What isn't the northeast corner of this project proposed? I assume it's subject to flood, which is adjacent to me.
Right. So, before we have the applicant go, Director Winger, would you mind describing for us the process, where we're at in the process today, and then what comes next with regards to the flood study?
So, were you asking for Eric to come? I think he went back to other, went back to the staff.
Okay, that's fine.
Room. So, it'll take you a second to get out here to discuss.
Thank you, I apologize.
Yep. No, that's good.
I don't know what's happened. Didn't used to be like this.
Please, thank you.
What I would like for you to do right now is to talk about the process when it comes to rezoning, and specifically this particular PC, where it's at in the process and what happens next after we address the land use today.
And are we talking specifically to drainage-type questions? So, the question comes up quite often about the development process, and similar to what I'm looking at on screen today, none of the engineering plans for the project have begun. As we go through site development, as we go through potentially zoning and other changes, all those are taken into consideration prior to engineering plans being done by the developer. So, it's too early in the process for us to be able to comment on any plans, not knowing what exactly would be constructed. But some of the things that are also going to be applicable are, the city has a drainage ordinance that has to be met for any new development. And so, it helps guide that design from beginning to end. It takes into account all the FEMA requirements. It takes into account state requirements for flooding and drainage control, and then also the local requirements as well. But until those engineering plans are actually completed, there's actually nothing for us to review at this time.
And is it true that part of the process is that they have to do, the developer has to do a flood study to submit with that? So, it's current conditions as well?
So, not every property requires a flood study. There's definitely drainage calculations that are required as a part of the city's ordinance. I would need to pull up some additional mapping information on this particular site. But yes, if development within a FEMA flood plain is proposed, there is flood study requirements as a part of the FEMA requirements. There are also some additional state requirements that sometimes come into play. It's a regulated channel by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And all these are things that are done during that design process. It's, again, it's something that you could evaluate a little bit early to see if any of the channels shown on this particular application are regulated or not, if any of the development plans within the area are going to be close to or adjacent to some of those channels. But the specifics in our final approval simply just can't be done until we receive the plans and are able to review them and comment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
David?
Good morning. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Brad Reed, the civil engineer, is also here with us. So, as Mr. Winger said, there is a multi-step process that we have to undertake here. This is the zoning phase. So, the question before the council is whether or not the use of single-family is appropriate here at Southwest 44th and West of Mustang. One of the tools you have at your disposal to make that determination is, of course, the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan designates this site under the urban low-intensity LUTA. Under urban low-intensity, single-family use is an appropriate use, primarily because here we have access to both public water and public sewer. So, because you have access to public water and public sewer, single-family use is the predominant use that you would expect to find in an urban low-intensity LUTA. Much of the discussion, much of the concerns that the neighbors have expressed are, of course, that of a plating concern. The plat will not go before the Planning Commission until sometime in July. At that time, that's when we really talk about densities and layouts and all of those matters. I did confirm with Mr. Reed that this site will require a flood study. So, before any dirt can turn, before any lots can be finally designed, a flood study will have to be submitted to the City of Oklahoma City for review by Public Works. Public Works will have a chance to review that pursuant to state law, as well as the city's drainage ordinance, to ensure that all of the criteria set forth in both of those documents are adhered to. Again, it'll be July 8th. We still have plenty of time to discuss any questions that the neighbors have as it relates to specific design. What I have shown you here, of course, is the proposed plat, and I've done so just to show you the buffers that have been included that the Planning Commission will see on July 8th. The first individual that spoke, you'll notice that we have included, I don't know if everyone can see, but a buffer of 10 feet along the west and north. His house actually faces east. So, along the east, we actually have a 75-foot buffer, and then it's the street, and there are only four houses there. Along the west, we have a 25-foot buffer. Along the north, we have a 10-foot buffer before you get to the lots. And the question about the northeast, that entirety of the northeast is actually going to be contained within common area and not developed, because there is some flood plain and floodway over there. So, it'll all be contained within a common area. You also notice a common area that runs through the neighborhood, kind of like a spine to connect to that northeast part. So, as it relates to the zoning application, it does conform with the comprehensive plan. Staff did recommend approval, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval unanimously. And we will, again, have an opportunity to meet with the neighbors. The planning process is, of course, a public hearing process with notice being sent. So, this will not be the last opportunity the neighbors have to see the proposal and voice concerns that they have. We are asking that the council will approve this so that we can let Mr. Reed and his staff move forward with the detailed drainage studies that will be necessary to come up with the final design of the project.
With all of that, and all of the challenges with the drainage in this particular area related to Mustang Creek, with the flood basin studies that are coming later this year for the entire city, and all of the things that the applicant has done so far to try and accommodate as much as we can with this, I do feel like that this land use is appropriate based on the information that's recommended by staff, as you said, and planning. So, I'm going to go ahead and move to approve this land use. I am going to hold you accountable to make sure that the residents are notified properly as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Young?
David Greenwell here. Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So, the first speaker, the gentleman said that 277 homes would be built on 77 acres. Is that correct?
It's 260 homes is the count.
Okay.
Again, and that's a bit preliminary, because until we have the drainage study complete and final design to a final plat, we won't know exactly. But based upon the preliminary review, 260 appears to be the lot count.
That's about a third acre per home?
Yeah, so, it'll meet R1 standards. You'll have the minimum lot size being 6,000 square feet. Some of the lots will be bigger than that, but it will be within both the comprehensive plan density range and the R1 density.
Okay. Well, just looking at the maps provided and the information provided, it does seem like it's a much more intense in terms of density than any surrounding neighborhoods.
So, to that point, if you look to the north, you'll see R1. To the west, you see R1 and R1. There are no lots there because it's undeveloped, but it is eligible pursuant to a plat that would meet the city's regulations to develop at an identical density to what we are seeking. This is a part of the city with the turnpike and expansions of the road network that is growing at a rapid rate. And here, you know, the city, when they adopted their comprehensive plan based upon sewer and water and all other infrastructure being in place, designated this site in a manner consistent with what we seek today.
Thank you, and I understand that. I just want to respect the current property owner's concern over the level of density and the change that brings about into this area. So, again, as noted, I think we're at the point where we could approve that this is going to be rezoned to R1. I just wanted to make everyone aware that I'm concerned in terms of the level of density that this proposal is suggesting at this point compared to the other surrounding properties. Thank you.
I have a question as well, and I just want to say, in our materials, it says all the subject sites around it, except for the north, are still zoned AA. So, just want to put that out there. I am curious, though, why, when we're talking about land use and appropriateness, we don't consider flooding in our process prior to the plating and processes that happen afterwards? Because it seems like if, it just seems like that would play into a conversation about appropriateness of what should be in an area like this, especially if everything surrounding it is still AA. Was that ever a conversation as part of Plan OKC development? Just kind of curious. I know I see Jeff over there, if he can maybe speak to that?
Sure. Jeff Butler, Planning Director. Yes, what we typically do, so the comprehensive plan, kind of, it has a lot to say, of course, about the environmental aspects of the city and any particular site, including, in this case, where you've got a stream corridor running through there, or wetlands, or flood plain. But, you know, what we typically, the way that our development process looks at it and the way Plan OKC looks at it, is you could have a site like this, for example, that would be zoned R1. But through the process of going through the other regulations, you know, you might only be able to develop half the site. So, even though something may be zoned R1, that doesn't necessarily mean that you can develop to its full extent, you know, because you would want to retain the flood plain. And so, our codes, the ones that Eric mentioned earlier, you know, they help the developers go through that. But again, in terms of the plan, the comprehensive plan, depending on the conditions on the site, you may be able to develop 90% of the site. You may only be able to develop half if it's in, if it has a lot of water features on it, flood plain, et cetera. And that's all something that is taken care of during the plating stage, because at that point, we have all the detail, the topography, and all the environmental considerations. you may be able to develop 90% of the site. You may only develop, be able to develop half if it's in, if it has a lot of water features on it, floodplain, et cetera. And that's all something that is taken care of during the, the plating stage, because at that point, we have all the detail, the topography, and all the environmental considerations all mapped out.
I just had a, a minor question. To the point of the, the first gentleman that spoke, I saw him get up and actually look at that. So had he been presented what this proposal would be as far as hit the buffer around his neighborhood and around his home?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Reed has, has reached out. This has been continued a couple times from the, the planning commission on the, the plating piece of it. So we have explained that to him. My client and him have actually been engaged in conversations about the possibility of perhaps buying his site. But yes, he has been informed about, about the buffers, and we will have an opportunity between now and July 8th to, to have any more detailed conversations that he'd like to, to have about it.
I'd like to get a nod from him, too, just to ensure that, that they did talk to him about it.
A question. Her, her question was whether or not Mr. Reed or the developer and you have spoken.
Very briefly, I believe it was, was a text. Are you David Methman?
No, I'm David Box. David Methman is the developer.
I see. No, we haven't really spoken to a much extent about this. I think I texted him or he texted me back and forth. Is Mr. Methman here?
So this is Brad Reed.
Oh, hi, Brad. Brad and I spoke.
Yeah. So Brad Reed, Crafton-Saul.
We've not met yet.
We have not. We've spoken twice on the phone, three times now on the phone. You know, we, we went over twice on the buffers, you know, the possible layout. They've seen the, the preliminary plat. As David had mentioned, it's gone. We've taken two continuances now from the planning commission meeting to have this item kind of fleshed out here. So we've made some, some conversations. As mentioned, he's, the developer has reached out to him as well once. I think they've talked. So we're more than happy to continue working through the process to, to make sure everyone's as, as happy as they can be if this development moves forward, so.
May I ask a question?
Councilmembers, I have a question. Isn't there a, an ordinance about lot sizes that abut another lot in the city to be like 80% or 75% of the lots that they abut? Is, is that an ordinance?
I'm going to let David or the planning.
Sure. So under the subdivision regulations, again, this is, once again, a, a plating issue, not a zoning issue. But under the subdivision regulations, there is a, a requirement that lots abutting larger lots be 75% of the size up to 7,500 square feet. So the, the proposed plat that you see before you is a, one of the ways we suggest to do it that we're going to talk to them between now and planning commission, where we actually have 7,200 square foot lots, but a 10-foot buffer. We're also happy to just meet the subregs and have those lots be 7,500 square feet. Our thought was having the 10-foot buffer and the slightly larger lots is a better scenario than the 75% requirement. We're happy to do it either way that the neighbors want.
A 10-foot buffer, isn't that five of these little squares right here?
Don't have a ruler.
And that's the distance between these houses they're proposing. 10 feet. That's one, two, three, four, five squares. These are two-foot squares. That's the distance between the homes they're proposing.
And so that is a plating issue. That, that is, that is not a zoning issue. It's a plating issue. The subregs dictate lot size next to other lots, densities, setbacks, all of those things, all of which we will adhere to.
May I ask a question?
10 feet. You and I holding hands here. We could reach out other side and touch the homes. It's pretty close.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Based on some of the concerns we've heard from a couple of the residents and some of the concerns from council, while I am inclined to support your decision, is there a way we can have, receive updates, that council can receive updates as it relates to the flooding concern? When I hear Councilman Greenwell, I hear the density concern, but it's the flooding. I, we have a neighborhood in Ward 2 that homes, if the rain gets too intense, we've had flooding go into homes, like into homes, across an entire street. And I know if that neighborhood's watching right now, they know, they're, they're going, yep. And I don't want, I'm, I do not want a situation where, because this neighborhood I'm talking about is decades old, decades old. I would really hate for this new development and the existing neighbors to find themselves in a world where my current residents find themselves, which is a real estate agent and a developer decades ago told them everything's fine, and then it wasn't. So I, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm trying to hear what I'm hearing from the resident, trust your guidance. I also think it would be helpful to actually receive some updates on what we're learning in terms of flooding. Is that something? And also, again, trusting your guidance, how would you like that to look?
Sure. No, definitely the flooding is a concern. David and I have talked about it at length on this particular development, as well as several others. So I don't think that that would be a problem. I would like to see the results of that flood study when you guys have that, and then we can bring it back to council and share it. Of course. Any other questions? Thank you, council members, residents, Mr. Box. We can move ahead.
You want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
9C is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 2909 South Cemetery Road going from AA to C3. Back to you, Councilwoman Young. And, oh, the applicant is here but doesn't need to speak unless there are questions.
Seeing no opposed, I motion to approve.
Okay.
Oh, make your pardon.
Do you have some idea of when these additional issues might be addressed?
On the previous item you're talking about. Maybe, maybe Jeff can probably help you outside on timing of all that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so we're on item C, and you're wanting to make a motion as soon as it comes up. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. Item 9D is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval at 5,100 East I-240 Service Road going from PUD 942 to I-1. Councilman Stone, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a, a small commercial development on 240, actually out over by the Heart Hospital. It's going to be a good project. Planning commission recommended its approval as well as staff. So with that, I will move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9E is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 13201 Green Hill Road going from PUD 1723 to SPOUD 1306. Councilman Stone, cipher, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Honorable. This rezoning application is to permit an office development. The planning commission recommended approval. There are no tests, so at this time, I will move for appro, approval when appropriate.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9F is an ordinance on final hearing to close a portion of Southeast 37th, south of Southeast Grand and east of I-35. Councilwoman next.
Yes, I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9G, 92, and item H are all related, and I believe we have a presentation. Why don't we start there, and then we can cover the public hearing? But this is regarding the Capitol Hill Business Improvement District and the assessment role for year 2021, 2022.
So this is just the approval of the assessment role, and I think Jeff, is Donna here to speak to this? Yes. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't see you back there, Donna. This is Donna Cervantes with the Planning Department.
Good morning. Donna Cervantes, Planning Office. This is the second year of the Capitol Hill Business Improvement District Generation 2. They are proceeding, again, to proceed with their bid services, taking care of this, this is a portion of Southwest 25th Street between Robinson and Walker Avenue. And I don't believe we've had any opposition to this proposal, but I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Seeing no questions, let's go to the public hearing at G1 regarding the Capitol Hill Business Improvement District. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak under that public hearing?
No, they haven't.
All right. Well, then we could take up the resolution found at 9G2, adopting and confirming the assessment role. We've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then item 9H is related. It's the ordinance on final hearing adopting and setting the assessment role for the Capitol Hill Business Improvement District. We could take a motion on that as well. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we're on 9I. This is an ordinance to be introduced and adopted potentially today with an emergency, repealing ordinance number 26,616, closing a 30-foot wide right-of-way for Northwest 3rd and the East West Alley right-of-way located east of Chartel, south of Northwest 4th. And I believe we have a presentation.
Yes, sir. Emily Pomeroy is here with the Center for Economic Development Law, just to give a quick update on why we need to repeal this or rescind this.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I'm Emily Pomeroy, 301 North Harvey, Suite 100. I'm a lawyer with the Center for Economic Development Law. We represent the Oklahoma City Urban Renewal Authority. This is related to a development, a proposed development at Northwest 4th and Chartel. The Urban Renewal Authority has entered into an agreement with a developer to develop approximately 300 for rent units on this site, 72 of which will be at or below 80% AMI. The item before you today is the repeal of ordinance number 26,616, which mistakenly sought two things. One of those things was the release of an OG&E easement through the Act B. Of course, that needs to be released by OG&E, not the city. So we are seeking that release from OG&E. And the second item was the closure of a, of a 30-foot street on 3rd Street. The street was already closed, and a deed of dedication was presented for a, a water line. So that, seeking that closure was simply incorrect. We just need a partial release of a 30-foot easement, and the developer will be seeking that separately before you at a later council meeting. So essentially, the two items sought in that ordinance were incorrect, just a mistake. So we're here to ask that that be repealed so that the development can move forward. I'm happy to try to address any questions.
Seeing no questions, we could take a motion to adopt the ordinance. We would need a second vote on the emergency. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then would someone like to make a motion on an emergency? We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9J, one is the public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed, except for those struck at the beginning of the meeting. Has anyone signed up to speak, Amy?
No, they haven't.
So we'll move on to 9J2, which is the resolution declaring that the structures are dilapidated. We could take a motion on that. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9K1 is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures here listed, except for those struck at the beginning of the meeting. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak on this public hearing?
No, they haven't.
So we'll move, they have not, so we'll move on to 9K.
Mayor, I was curious. I, I was speaking with the local about-to-be owners of the property at item G. The notice is being sent to an out-of-state owner but is currently in the process of being purchased by the Oklahoma City Housing Authorities slash Commonwealth Development. And they are actually in the process, they learned about this on Friday when I was like, I think this is that property. So they are in the process of addressing it, and I was curious if we could defer this to make, to give them time to do that and let Development Services follow up with them. Is that okay? So yeah, I will motion for deferral on item 9KG.
Yeah.
If that's the right thing.
9K1G deferred for two weeks. Okay. We have a motion and a second for the deferral of that item. Cast your votes.
If we can, my name is Charles Bishop.
What is this in regards to?
Item zero, item O.
Okay, hold on one second. So that motion for deferral of item 9K1G passes unanimously? And sir, you're wishing to speak on item 9K1O, 2616 Southwest 51st Street? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Charles Bishop. I own a property at 2616 Southwest 51st. I have a building permit on the property. We've been working on it continuously. We have been somewhat delayed by workers with COVID, supply of materials.
I could save you some time. I'm told that item was struck.
Pardon me?
I'm told that item was struck at the beginning of the meeting.
The item was struck.
Yes, sir. So it's not on there any longer. Showed that it was, it's secured.
All right. Okay, so that leaves us with what is remaining on item 9K and the list, and we could take a motion on 9K2 to declare that the remaining items are unsecured. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Word four, we're waiting on that?
Yeah, we're waiting on me.
What are you seeing?
Uh, nothing.
How do you wish to vote?
Uh, I, please.
Okay. Passes unanimously. All right. 9L1 is the public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for those struck at the beginning of the meeting. Sign up to speak.
I'm here.
Hearing that there are, that there is no one in, in your item, does it appear again?
It is on this one, as well as on F. So I was hoping to defer that one as well for two weeks.
All right. So we'll take a motion to defer item 9L1F for two weeks. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. The remaining items, not struck or deferred, are included in the resolution in 9L2, declaring that the buildings are abandoned, which we can now adopt if the council wishes to make a motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we are at 9M1 and 2. These items are related. 9, 2, we'll kind of start with the presentation. This is a resolution approving a substantial amendment to the FY 2020, 2021 Consolidated Action Year Plan to allocate $11 million to the Section 108 Loan Program for the First National Center, et cetera. Mr. City Manager, you want to lead us off with a presentation?
Right. So Brent Bryant, our finance director, is here to give us a presentation on the proposed changes that are before you. Finance department has worked with the planning staff through this. This is regarding an application on a Section 108 loan for the development of the First National Center. So Brent, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning. Brent Bryant, the finance director. Today Today, I'm here to provide you with some background about the First National Center. I know it's been before you before regarding the redevelopment of that, so I'm going to give you just a brief history, then I'm going to go into the details of the 108 and then the timeline from there. The First National Center, on February 23rd, 2016, the City Council approved a TIF district, TIF District Number 10. We carved it out of the downtown TIF District Number 2 for the sole purpose of redeveloping the First National's building. And then on August 15th, 2017, the City Council approved an allocation of $40 million in tax increment in TIF from Ad Valorem and an additional $5 million from sales tax that would be generated from the hotel at the First National Center. The First National Center is comprised of three components. There's a garage that the city's participated in, there's the housing in which the city's not participating in that, and then there's the hotel portion in which we're participating in also with the TIF funds. The garage is approximately 600 spaces, apartments of about 193 units, and a hotel of 146 units. On October 24th of 2017, the City Council approved an EDA regarding the garage of that. We allocated $17 million in total, $14 million of that in Ad Valorem, and $3 million in sales tax to support that project. That project that they've started on, and that is that they've completed that project at this time. And then we'll go to the next one here. On March 26th, 2019, Council approved an EDA with the developer on this for the hotel and the residences. We originally, this has been a very hard project to do. We knew that going in when we created the TIF district. They, seeking financing for this was difficult. When you look at the finances, at one point in time, we called it the Tower Project where we were combining the hotel and the housing together. When the financing fell through on that, we came back and then they found financing for both, for each one of them separately, so we had to bifurcate them, separate them out. And so you're going to have some times where you've seen a tower project, sometimes we talk about the hotel, sometimes you think, so just wanted to kind of clarify that. In 2019, Council approved an EDA, like I said, which provided 28, for a total of $28 million, which was $26 million for Ad Valorem and $2 million in sales tax. The EDA provided that the trust provided incentive loan, which we have done that. We finished, we closed on that last year. Council initially authorized that in the Economic Development Trust at $25 and a half million. We subsequently did not loan them that full amount. We loaned them right at 24 and a half. We've been able to generate some increment from that, so we're able to contribute it. At the end of the day, we contributed $25 million to the hotel project, the TIF, and we're still helping make payments on that. We've not paid all that out at this time, but we have, that is secured by minimum annual tax payment, offsets the, but it's offset by the hotel and Ad Valorem increment and sales tax increment. One of the things that we do to protect the city with, when we provide loans to developers, especially on the TIF side, is we require a minimum tax payment, where they have to make a minimum tax payment to help, to pay the debt that's associated with that. And in addition to that, we got personal guarantees by the principals of the parent developer. When we did the $25 million loan for this project, TIF loan, we also established a debt service reserve, the first initial amount. What we did is we looked at what's the annual, maximum annual debt service on this debt, and we took one years of that, put it in reserve fund on day one. It's been sitting, and it'll sit there until, and will be used to pay it off at the end. We also charged them a spread on what our borrowing rate is. We charged the developer an additional basis points to cover that. And then also, we have a point where, once we have two times on that, we will then, two times debt service set aside, again, to protect the city on this project. Once that's happened, we can pay down the debt. Any excess, we can pay down principal, it's kind of like you make an extra principal payment on your house mortgage, well, that's essentially what we'll do there. The Section 108 loan program is a guaranteed component of our Community Development Block Grant and is subject to all CDBG requirements. The city can loan out up to five times the annual CDBG allocation for qualified community Our capacity is around $25 million in total. We currently have around, with this loan, our borrowing capacity will be around 60, we have $60 million of the borrowing capacity right now, so we'll have some additional with the $11 million loan today. We previously had loaned out $6.9 million of 108 loan, of a 108 loan to the 21C Hotel. In addition to, we have a $2 million revolving loan fund. These types of, this type of program is really helps the hospitality business. It fits really well with the jobs that it supports, and it helps fill the gap for financing for these type of projects. Projects on how this, the Section 108 loan program is used, it must be eligible for activities and meet a CDBG national objective, which is principally benefit low, moderate income persons. And again, like I said, it's been used mainly here in Oklahoma City over the past 20 years, at least, on hotels. How does it work? Financing is via a loan guaranteed by HUD to the city, and the city will then subsequently loan the proceeds to the developer. And then we provide them, similar to what we did with our TIF debt to them, we charge them a spread on that. We use that to help stabilize our system. The HUD funds loans through public offerings through interim and fixed financing, and HUD guarantees the loan between the bank and the city, and both provides both financing for the securities for credit enhancements. The typical terms is no more than 20 years, but in this case, our initial will be a seven-year term with them, with lowest rate, it helps make lowest, the rates lower, and the payment will be paid by the funds that are generated by the hotel and the level of assistance. One thing I would want to point out, the developer anticipates hiring about 280 employees in the hotel. Typically, what we see in a hotel, it's one job per key, as they say, or one job per room, with it being around 140 rooms, you would think that. He believes that they will provide more jobs than normal. And so when you look at the capacity on our section, on this program, it's $50,000 per job, and they believe that they can create at least 220 jobs, which is what the basis is for the $11 million loan. One thing I do want to clarify, it's initial seven years, but it cannot exceed 20 years. That's kind of the plan, working with the Planning Department. Minimum of a second position on the real property is, it was anticipated. Practices to reduce the city's risk, city staff, the Planning Department, has gone, done some extensive review and underwriting. And one thing I'd like to point out, this project has been looked at and underwritten by many, many people in the financial world, trying to evaluate the feasibility of it. And one of the things that we're doing, again, to reduce our risk, is we are passing along the borrowing costs, our low borrowing costs to protect us, and when possible, shorter terms to decrease the city obligation in the monitoring and compliance period. With our annual CDBG allocation, we will have money set in reserve, we'll have a contingency to help in case they would not be able to make their payments. Loans are restricted to the project that generates the revenue, and loans only for gap funding, and the loan will be fully collateralized. Today's hearing, we're seeking three things. We're having our public hearing regarding a substantial amendment to the Consolidated Action Plan, again, and to approve a substantial amendment to include the $11 million loan, and we also seeking authorization for staff to submit a loan application to HUD and for this to, and we will subsequently then bring back an agreement to you. And the next steps would be a HUD review for 30 to 45 days. There's about a three-month time period here, and then at the end of the day, an agreement would be brought back to the city that both HUD agrees to and that city staff recommends, and we'll bring it back to you, and then at that point in time, we will close the loan and then advance the funds. Gary Brooks is here today to, if you have any questions regarding this project. And then also, I want to acknowledge Chris Varga and Matt Gabrielson for their hard work and diligence on this. They did a lot of the detailed work on this project, and I just wanted to recognize them for all their diligence on this. I'm happy to answer any questions or get the right people up here to answer.
I guess essentially what you're saying is you were asking us to move forward on negotiations, which will include negotiations with HUD, and we don't have the finalized documents yet, correct?
No, sir. What, we came up with some, a key terms, so what we think an agreement would look like, and we had to do that to put in the application, so HUD would have something to evaluate, and we have done that. Nothing's etched in stone, but there's still subject things, things that are subject to negotiation.
Thank you very much.
Brent, do you know what interest rate we're looking at in terms of this loan?
Right now, it's about a, probably between 2.5% to 3% is the interest rate.
And I think in your presentation, you said outside parties may be able to take a portion of this loan. Is that what you said, or did I misunderstand?
Would you mind repeating that?
Yeah, that outside parties may participate in this loan.
Um, I may misspoke there.
I may have misunderstood you. Never mind. Thank you.
I had a, I don't know if it's more of a, just a comment, but I think during the presentation, I wanted to key things as far as the 108 loan program that I heard were low to moderate income, but also hotels, so I'm kind of confused how that's supposed to work together in the effort to benefit low to moderate income persons. But also, I know as we look at HUD and what the agreement is, I know I need to, I probably have questions, more so for Mr. Wiley, that I'd like to discuss after the meeting pertaining to a section of the HUD program and the loan program that they offer pertaining to contracting and just development in general. And as we are looking at job creation, I'm curious to know how many positions we're looking at and the efforts of employment as far as to ensure we're getting mixed incomes, as well as a mixed and diverse community that will benefit from these jobs that will be presented.
Can you tell me how, if we, if we normally, and hotels normally look at one job per room, and there's going to be 140 rooms, how we can estimate that there's actually going to be 220 jobs available, and how can we back up and make sure that that's guaranteed?
I'm going to let the developer answer that question.
Thank you.
Gary Brooks, 2217 Lone Oak Way. Councilman, thank you for the question. First National is different than every other project in this city for a lot of reasons. One of them specifically is typically in a hotel, you would have a restaurant and a bar. In our, at the National, we have seven restaurants and bars as part of our offering, so we have a lot more employees than we typically, you would have in a 146-room hotel. We also have ballrooms that'll seat up to 400 that you typically wouldn't have in a 146-room hotel. So there's a lot more staffing required at a project like First National. Not only that, but think of the Cold Core or Ambassador, or any nice hotel, Skirvin. The majority of people going in there are there for a reason. They're either there to go to the restaurant or the bar, or they're a guest. At First National, the vast majority of people coming through will not be guests or residents. They're just, there's traffic, it's the concourse, so we have to have additional staff just to accommodate the thousands of people that will be coming through that building every day. Okay, thank you.
I was going to say, I heard a question in Councilwoman Nice's statement, and I didn't, it just seemed like we moved on, and I was curious about the same thing, so I was curious if we could get an answer to those questions.
Yeah, what, specifically, Councilwoman, what is the question? How are we going to, I want to make sure I address your question, so.
As far as the initiatives for, no, I forgot the question, because it's been so long ago.
The employment piece in particular, I think, especially, and I, and I think we've spoken about this, about how this project will benefit low to moderate income people, because a fancy hotel is not something that benefits low to moderate income people historically, so how does that fit in with this program with the CDBG overlook?
And my question was about the employment as far as the job, the job creation, and the efforts of ensuring we do have, again, the mixed income, as well as a mixed and diverse backgrounds from our city to truly benefit and be a part of this development.
I think I understand. Probably the best way for me to answer it is to tell you what we've done, not what we're going to do. In 2017, the first workers we had in the building were from the First Step Recovery Program. We've paid thousands of hours to that group to come into our building. We ultimately hired onto our staff seven permanent positions. We still have a few of those in place. Two of those have become supervisors. One of them rose to the second person in charge of the Garage Gallery. We were one of the largest asbestos jobs in the country in 2017. We spent $100,000 and built a program at Rose State, brought in trainings, trainers to train ultimately 40 people that went through the class. 10 ultimately got certified, passed all eight parts, and were hired by our asbestos removal company. In 2016, we began conversations with the Curbside Chronicle and Homeless Alliance to talk about best practices and begin looking around the country for programs that, that we could copy and bring in and build a strategy for training program for people specifically for First National to work. We've re-engaged those conversations with them. So, you know, I would tell you that it's just, it's part of our DNA, it's part of the way we think, it's part of the way we operate. That's probably the best way I can answer the question.
As far as the low-income aspect of that being the national objective, in this case, the money is being the justification for the use of the funds, of the loan lines, is for those people who have the opportunity to work at the hotel. It's presumed that they will be kind of the lower-skilled workers that come from a lower-income background, they have the opportunity to acquire those positions, and that's presumed because of the area with which it resides, the hotel, being in the NERSA. So that's, that is the justification for the CDBG, for the Section 108 funds.
Jeff, to follow up, and I know this was a conversation which took place on the board, where this went to first, and seeing it again in the presentation, and then hearing Mr. Brooks describe your background, am I hearing this right, that we're kind of looking at very livable wages? I saw $50,000 salaries, like?
I'll let Mr. Brooks cover. I know he's got the details of the wages.
The $50,000 is a federal number. It has nothing to do with our project.
And that's not about, that's not about the wages you pay, it's about the federal government, when they're doing the HUD program, for every job you create, you can get up to $50,000 in loan capacity. It's about loan capacity, it's not about wages. So that's what the $50,000 is about.
So then to follow up, the wage conversation which took place on the earlier board, that, is that part of what we're approving today? Because I believe they had some requests in terms of wages.
Yes, they, they had a conversation about a living wage. I'm sorry, I couldn't tell if you were saying 15 or 50.
I did say 50 earlier, but that was me misunderstanding the loan, and thank you, Brent, for describing that, but yes, the wage conversation.
Okay, gotcha.
And it's my understanding that that's something that is not being decided today, and that's why I asked the specific question. Are we still in the negotiations phase, where we negotiate with the developer, with HUD and others? And so there's being no determination made by the City Council today as to wages. What's the, the vote today is to move forward with the negotiations for the loan.
Thank you for that clarification. When then, this wage conversation? Because look, you know- Because look, you know, um, as someone who's worked three adjunct jobs at a time and not made more than $22,000 a year, it's one thing to have a job, it's a whole nother thing to have a job where I can actually pay my groceries and my rent. And I, I don't mean that in a, I'm saying I'm hopeful because of the conversations I was hearing on that board. I just need you all to understand that I know what it's like to spend almost all of my twenties and early thirties only making $22,000 a year, and not because I'm dumb, and not because I didn't do what was asked of me by going to school. In fact, that was with two master's degrees. And you all will remember the teacher walkout. Someone with a bachelor's degree who was a teacher, just a couple of years ago, their starting pay was $31,000 a year. And me with two master's degrees started off at 35, and that's why we walked out. That struggle, having to see other teachers with families at Jefferson, make use of our food pantry weekly, that's why I ran, because, and that's why I walked out. So we can pay people, but we must pay them so they're not in a struggle weekly. And I bring that voice to this council right now. So I love the backstory of the DNA, and I want to know what the next chapter is gonna look like, and when that part of it comes before council. Thank you.
Yeah, that's correct. Mr. Stone, as Mr. Stone Cypher was saying, the, the next, the funding agreement will come back to the council, so that will be the opportunity to finalize terms and details. But yes, that, that conversation was had about the living wage and so forth, that the Citizens Committee, and that the, their, their thoughts are in the, the staff report for this item.
But I think it's important to point out that, that along this entire process, Mr. Brooks has been very open, very candid with us on one of the most difficult projects in the history of this city. This thing makes the Skirvin look simple. And, and there's, there's a lot of balls in the air, and there's a lot of things going on, and there's a lot of moving parts. And so we need to keep, I know your report today only went back to 2016, but if we think about the history of this building, and it's years in bankruptcy, we either have a vacant building, or we all move together and make something that works, that's really great for the city.
And I would say in the spirit of that, clearly we want our communities and our city to be developed, but I, I think we also need to be very careful how we use these, this 108 loan program, again, when the impetus is low to moderate income persons, and we're doing hotels to benefit this 108 loan program. So in the future, I think we need to be very careful, especially pertaining to other projects that I know people in the community have brought forward that say they can't get funding for. And I know those in particular benefit low to moderate income persons. So I think that's, that's the difficulty in these types of asks, when we say yes to some things, but we can't say yes to all of the others. So I just want to keep that on our, our minds as well. But I, I do agree, yes, we're all, we all have memories of this building, because I do as well with my father, so I get it. And we want it to be developed. So I, we are thankful that we're gonna move forward with this, and, and very thankful for the conversation of a livable wage for our community and for our residents of our city to be able to grow and prosper as well.
Okay.
I'm prepared to move the item, Your Honor.
Did we have anyone, Amy, who signed up to speak under Item M1, the public hearing on this item?
No, we don't.
Okay, all right, then we could move the resolution. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes.
This doesn't require any emergency provision, does it?
Motion passes and no. No, there's no emergency requested. All right, passes unanimously. All right, now we're at N1 and 2, they are related. We'll start with the public hearing. This is all about the fiscal year 2022 annual budget. Of course, we've been at this for a couple of months now, and today is the potential conclusion of that conversation. And 9 N1 is the public hearing regarding fiscal year 2022 annual budget. And as I call people up to speak, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address, and keep your remarks to three minutes or less. We'll start with Jasmine Brown Jutres.
Thank you. My name is Jasmine Brown Jutres. I live at 4101 Northwest 51st Street. I am an organizer and an advocate here in Oklahoma City. I first want to address the biggest issue in the room. Today, you guys are gonna vote yes, no matter what I say on this budget, solely for the fact that you're trying to prove a political point. You're here to prove that you support the police, you back the blue, you support all these other programs, but we're not having the right conversations. And I feel like every day, every meeting, you have constituents come and speak to you and tell you what's happening in their neighborhoods, tell you people are dying in their neighborhoods. Your constituents in your wards are dying, and it's like it's going on deaf ears. So what I want to say is, in turn, by you choosing to ignore the flaws on the budget, the process, the policing system as a whole, you're ignoring, you're ignoring your people, you're ignoring the constituents. There are millions of dollars allocated to this budget with very little transparency. There are millions of dollars that are being allocated with as little as three line items. I can talk to you today about police killing OKC residents, but that doesn't resonate with you. I can tell you that even though the same department that you're supporting killed Benny, Stavion, Daniel, and Starr, and will kill again, but that's still not enough to convince you. So I want to talk with you today about something besides that. I want to talk with you today about these points of the fact that there is a lack of transparency in how we are passing these budgets. There are, in one of, just one of the line items, we're, of the police department, when they requested, uh, they requested 41, $41.1 million, there is three line items to that request. Three. That is not telling us enough of where these funds are going. And we are allowing our city to pass a budget of, just for the police department, of $227 million with as little as three to four line items per department request. Where is that okay? I don't understand where that is something that you, as a council, can approve. There is not enough transparency in how we are going about this process. Now, I do thank you, because we do have a $1 point million amount that has been allocated, $300,000 to a mental health alternative service, and $1 million that's been allocated to whatever comes out of the task force. However, that's not enough. It's a stepping stone. Because what's happening is you are throwing this amount, this slush money that you have, throwing it at us and saying, here you go, but there's no promise of what happens to it. We need to let you know that if you are going to give us a mental health alternative, it needs to be outside of OKCPD. It needs to be a program that is funded well, supported by you once you pass it, and a program that of, above all, I want to say it again, outside of the police department, and is taken care of publicly. We need this. We need you to do better. If you vote, if you vote yes today on it, because I know you will, but I want you to remember this. Your constituents are dying every day, and we come to you at every council meeting and let you know our concerns. We let you know, we need you to listen. We need you to do your job. I'm here every day, every day of my life, I spend it fighting for something to be done. And on this day, and at every council meeting, you are voting against what your constituents need. And I'm urging you to please take a turn and start doing better, because if I'm fighting every day, I need you to come in this room and fight every day for your constituents as well. With that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Nick Singer?
Good morning. My name is Nick Singer, and my address is 6032 Smith Boulevard. After a year of national reckoning, the OKCPD has had a pretty bad year. We've had three high-profile murders, six police officers charged so far, and a completely senseless death the other week after a high-speed chase. This also isn't the first time you're hearing all of this. OKCPD is the second most deadly police department in the country, and police murders are the tip of the iceberg. I've also been in front of this body before to beg for resources to address homelessness, mental health, and alternatives to incarceration. And what do we get? Millions more for the police department. While the 1.3 million for the task force ideas and the mental health pilot are great, they are a frighteningly small amount of money. It came out of, it came out the other day, you're gonna give nearly, you've given nearly $300,000 a year to the Thunder to buy parking for season ticket holders, and you've been doing it for years. You know, my personal story, where I've vested interest in this, is I had a family member who had mental health and substance abuse issues. There is literally nowhere to take them. The options that the police gave us were to take them to the county jail or to have them be homeless. And we don't do anything about it. And these stories happen all the time. I've sat across the table from John George and had conversations about mental health calls and how the police aren't capable of handling them. You know, we, it's been mentioned a lot, but like Starshells, Stavion Rodriguez, and Daniel Hobbs did not need to die. The, these are police culture problems. I mean, if you look at the Stavion tapes, they're horrifying. It was like 20 cops hanging out at a tailgate while a 15-year-old gets executed. Like, that's, it's just bad police work. While this whole debate about policing has become like this sick display of like political loyalty, you guys are the policymakers. It's on you to hold the city manager accountable, and ultimately, the chief and the police. This doesn't happen in other countries. Our police kill so many people that they make up a double-digit percentage of all murders in our city. If we eliminated police killings tomorrow, murder rate would drop by over 10%. Of murders by a stranger, it's even more. We need accountability. We need real alternatives to policing. We need to budget real resources to our problems and not send good money after bad outcomes. I've personally been here asking for this for years. I have homeless encampments at the end of my street because we can't build housing to house people, and they have to live in tents in our neighborhoods. You know, we have families that are in crisis that can't get help, and you'd rather fund a bloated police budget or playgrounds for rich people. You know, Mark, Todd, Mayor Holt, I know you guys are at least reasonable men. Is it okay that the police killed a man for looking up at the clouds in his front yard? Is it okay that we initiate high-speed chases on a GPS-tracked truck in rush hour traffic? Is it okay to have a tailgate atmosphere at a crime scene where you then execute a 15-year-old? Tell the police enough is enough. Reject this budget and fund better priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Benjamin?
I do feel a little sheepish with my comments, because they're not related to what the previous speakers have said, but Andrea Benjamin, I live at 1518 Northeast 9th Street. A year ago, residents of the city of Oklahoma City asked the mayor and this council to establish, to re-establish the Human Rights Commission. The mayor, thank, thank you, and the council appointed a task force, and we had been working hard all year with council members Nice, Hammond, Stone, Stone Cypher, various city staff, to present a proposal to this council. So I'm here to just say that while the recommendation of the Human Rights Task Force is still forthcoming, I do support the recommendation out of this budget to, the non-departmental budget and the general fund, to provide an initial allocation of funds to an appointed Human Rights Commission to carry out its work. As you all know, we believe that a strong Human Rights Commission will strengthen safe, secure, and thriving neighborhoods, achieve social justice, institute high standards within all city services, promote community wellness, and improve fiscal management, and advance a strong economy. So I do appreciate that you did include that in the budget, even though we have not been able to present our ordinance to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Tasneem Al-Michael?
My name is Tasneem Al-Michael. I'm 21 years old, live at 3908 Northwest 68th Street. Been a resident of this city my entire life. Came here when I was nine months old, but I'm genuinely concerned about what the direction of my home is going in. America kills 35 individuals for every 10 million people. That's just between the country's data from '27 to 2019. We incarcerate more than anybody per capita, and Oklahoma is number two in the nation when it comes to incarceration, and also when it comes to deaths by police violence. However, it seems that our government likes to reward bad behavior with additional funds. It's an open secret that our state includes, which includes our city, runs on fines, fees, over-incarcerates, and frankly, over-kills its residents. It's an open secret that we have some of the worst mental health, drug abuse crises, and domestic violence. And I know all of this because myself and my personal family has been directly impacted by this. I come from a family of teachers, psychologists, and business folks, and as my father would like to say, please don't waste my money, otherwise give me a return. $20 million is a lot of money, and that's more money that's being put into our OKCPD since three years ago. And $300,000 is just a meager amount that's being tested for a pilot program for a mental health response. Cities like Eugene, Oregon, Denver, Colorado, Houston, Texas, they employ mental health specialists, you know, ones with extensive training, not just a couple of years, and not just a few months, and they require money. Consider doing an outreach campaign, because the truth is, if you want to invest in this city, if you want people to move here, if you want to make more money for development, then you have to invest in its people directly. Invest directly in mental health and community response teams. Consider decriminalizing a lot of the issues that you lock people up for. Consider public education and beautification. Maybe introduce something with some more culture and city programming, and building institutions that are more cost-effective. Consider incentivizing people to move and live here. You know, I was also appointed to the city's Human Rights Task Force Commission, and let's be honest, I could probably find a human rights violation headline from The Oklahoman every other week.
Yeah, 30 seconds.
Let's not lie to ourselves even further. This commission's also gonna need to be very well-funded from the amount of cases that you'll be seeing. We know that a dollar goes a lot further in the state of Oklahoma than it does in other places of this country. So consider making some smarter investments, because the rest of us are gonna end up suffering for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jess Eddy?
Just want to applaud the citizens who've come up to speak before me in a room packed with cops and the FOP, and in front of a city council steeped in white supremacy and racism. I think their, their truth and their courage to speak their experience is remarkable and shows a lot more courage than any of these cowards in OKCPD uniform, who are proud to represent the number-two-killingest-police department in the country. New data's out just a couple of weeks ago that shows that not only is Oklahoma City still the second-highest police, killingest police department, we have this biggest disparity between the murder, police murder rate and a violent crime rate in the nation by a factor of two. We're talking a violent crime rate of seven and a murder rate by police of 21 per million residents. This police department, for all the facts that have been presented to you just now, that was fact-laden statements. That wasn't just emotional appeal and logic. Tracking a car last week on GPS that they chased 100 miles an hour through two school zones, they almost parked elementary and Northeast High School, when it slammed into a pregnant woman. And you need to know that when the police arrived on the scene and it was apparent that Starr was deceased, they couldn't figure out why they were picking up a heartbeat. That's Oklahoma City Police Department, the black community. That's not in your community, Bradley, or your community, Barbara, or yours, Todd. Certainly not yours, Kenny. Certainly not yours, Craig, and damn sure not yours, David Holt. And the fact that none of you have the courage to even speak on these issues, these heinous murders, but you want to pass the largest city budget, police budget in city history? You want to perpetuate that status quo? Have you- Have you no boldness, no principle?
Thirty-second reminder.
Is it only reelection and politics? Do their lives not matter? How can you live with yourselves? It's on you. We're doing everything we can. We don't hate cops. We hate people being killed. And it happens every month or week in this city. Do something.
Michael Washington?
Yes, 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 yes. I thought I had a memorable moment here. Mr. John George, how are you, sir? Great to hear. Now then, Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast with a 1 and 18th Street. I'm a great people doing back here. You not have murder to be related? Watch it, now we got one of us is gonna keep it real. Now then... Are you kidding me? You want to give a murderous police force here in Oklahoma more money to put Klansmen on the police force here in Oklahoma City? I don't need that type of flagrant disregard for human rights, especially in African-American community and those in the Latino and other minority communities around the state of Oklahoma. Watch out, Michael, let's not be too clear here. Now then, here is the largest agency, police agency in the world with more than 325,000 members nationwide want to come in and say, "Well, now, we need more money to do our jobs now. We need more money to murder more innocent people with their hands up, running away from us. We need more people dying that's in the front yard looking up to the sky and coming and telling you, 'Hold up, man, I have a mental issue,' but oh, now I don't care. I'm still gonna arrest you, I'm gonna kill you today.'" Uh, go ahead and do it, Bob. I've got the protection and the go-ahead and the wherewith by the fraternal order of police who runs Chief Wade Gorley, which Michael Washington has repeatedly stated and still continued to say now, "Chief Wade Gorley, you must go." And you too, Mr. Craig Freeman, because you seem to have a problem, sir, with handling this flagrant minority abuse that's going on here. It seems to me that this fraternal order of police is using their unreasonable influence, undue influence, to basically tell you people what to do here. Now you want to pass the largest budget in police history, huh? So they can put more officers so, because I need increase more killings. They're not telling you all about this. But at the same time, do you know the majority of these officers who go on the street every day are human beings just like us? Don't you know they have wife beatings and things that going on? Just know some of them jump on their wives and babies and kill people just like everybody else? You don't hear about it, get drunk? Seems like the money should be spent in those people areas with more psychological measures designed for each officer. I agree, first of all, that they need a mental evaluation every six months. Now then, if you had the money allocated to that department, watch this here, and let me, somebody like myself being an independent overseer...
Thirty seconds remaining.
I like that, that's pretty nice. Now then, well, y'all know I just get started when I get here, but let me tell y'all something. This year will not fly. To hell with education, increasing education, to hell with homelessness, to hell with mental health, to hell with protecting people's lives, not seeing me, but this is what you people would be doing if you passed this frivolous budget. To hell with saving lives like Stavion Rodriguez, to hell with lives with killing Benny Edwards, to hell with lives with killing Curtis Bub Williams in Oklahoma County Jail without even, come on, John George, hell no, get the hell out of here, man. That's right, Michael Washington saying that I don't mean business. I started me stuff, baby, because I'm still signed up for more. I have a great one, if you would.
That concludes our public hearing, item nine and two. And now we're on the resolution. I believe maybe you have a little bit of a wrap-up from Doug Dowler to kind of set, set the stage.
Yes, Doug Dowler, our budget director, will give us a brief presentation on the budget, just kind of an overview of what we've discussed so far and an update to where we are.
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Council Doug Dowler, Budget Director for the city. This is the budget that we introduced on May 4th. We've had several budget hearings, and so it totals $1,648.6 million. That's a decline of about 2.4%, primarily to decrease, due primarily to decreases in MAPS III and Better Street Safer City as they spend down their remaining balances. And you can see the impact of those funds on the non-operating funds. They declined about 8% to $902 million. The general fund is up 6.8% over the current year budget to $496.4 million, due primarily to growth in sales and use tax and the fact that we are ending up better this year than we expected, which gives us a strong base to grow on next year. Our other operating funds are up by 2.1% at $249.7 million. For the coming year, we're proposing an increase of 109 positions. That's about 2.3% more than the current year. This is in addition to the 57 positions that are currently frozen that are fully funded in FY '22. When we look at the revenue for the city's budget, the largest source is taxes at about $700 million or 43% of the total budget. Sales tax is the largest source within that category and for our, for our budget at over $468 million of the total. Other areas to note in our revenue side are fund balance is our second-largest revenue source with MAPS III and Better Street Safer City accounting for about half of that total. I'd also like to note that federal grants includes $122.5 million in revenue from the American Rescue Plan Act, that money we have just recently received will be coming back to council with plans on how that may be allocated in the, in the coming weeks. When we look at the general fund revenue, sales tax again is a majority at 53%, $263 million. Use tax has become bigger over the years, especially with online sales tax now being captured through use tax. That's 16% of our total or about $80 million. So between sales and use tax, over 2/3 of our budget comes from that source there. When we look at the expenditure side of the budget, these are the categories that are outlined in the Municipal Budget Act. Personal services is the largest category at 33%, followed by other services, which includes contracts, utilities, and chargebacks. And capital outlay is the third-largest category at 24%. Zooming in on the general fund, personal services is the vast majority of the expenses at 72%. Again, it takes people to do the work of the city. Other services come in at 21%. Supplies, capital, and transfers are all fairly small, in total 7%. When we look at the general fund by service area, you can see in broad terms where we spend general fund dollars, public safety makes up the majority at 63% or $314 million. And you can see the other categories there are between 9 and 17%. So one last note on the budget, there were some questions raised about mowing during the parks and Recreation Department presentation. The budget does include the resources to allow parks to return to a two-week mowing schedule at community and neighborhood parks. Since that presentation, Parks and Recreation Department has looked in their budget and determined that they can mow the large regional parks as well on the two-week schedule using part-time and overtime funds that are within the current budget. So I just wanted to give that update that all parks are planned to be mowed on a two-week schedule coming up in the next fiscal year. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Doug, thank you for the follow-up on the mowing issue. That's great news. And I always like to point out every year that even though this appears to be a $1.5, $1.6 billion budget, last year's actual expenditures were closer to a billion and the year before that and so on.
Right.
And it's because, somewhat unique, I find, in the way we do budgeting, but it's because we always include all the thing, all the capital expenditures we could conceivably engage upon this year, but we will likely not. And so I just always point that out. I mean, and maybe for our friends up in the booth up there, you know, it will look like a 1.5, 1.1, what is the final number?
Yeah, 1.65.
1.6 billion-dollar budgeted, but we all know in reality it will be more like a $1 billion budget.
You're correct. We do want to make sure we have the budget authority to spend it on projects that may be needed. Likewise, under state law, we've got to encumber funds, we've got to reserve those funds when we let a contract, especially for these large capital projects, something like, say, the convention center that takes multiple years to finish. We've got to have all the money in place at the beginning and the budget authority to encumber that or to authorize those contracts to begin. We've got to have all the money in place.
Yeah, so that's a good way of putting it. We're authorized to spend 1.6, but we all know going in, in reality, we're going to spend closer to a billion.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
I've had some questions pertaining to some other departments that didn't get to present, and maybe there's a way we can, sorry. Maybe there's a way we can address some of those things now, since those are of concern for me pertaining to how I vote pertaining to this budget. One thing I know I've been asking for since the beginning of conversations was the KIVA program to be added into this budget, and I still don't see it. So I don't know if I'm overlooking all of these pages and I just don't see it, but that's one thing I do not see added to this budget. And another question I had, looking under the Finance Department, Community Enhancement, there's a community development program that I'm very curious about pertaining to a position that's being proposed for our next budget season and how that's going to benefit our residents and our community. So those are just a few things right now, in particular, before more questions, but these were the first, the former questions that I have in other departments.
So the, the KIVA program is in the OSED budget, in the Economic Development Trust budget, and we contract with the Alliance for Economic Development, and that is the way I recommend that we continue funding that on the two positions that are in the Economic Development budget. It's, one is economic development, one's community enhancement, and we split those out several years ago when that program was in the city manager's budget. It's now in the Finance Department. It's two existing positions, it's not adding positions, but it's two existing positions that help to manage the Economic Development Trust, the Economic Development Program for the city, and our Tax Increment Finance districts. So that's where the, the Community Enhancement comes in because some of the TIF funding or the TIF programs aren't specific to economic development, but they may be other, other types of improvements, like sometimes it could be infrastructure improvements or other types of improvements. So that's why the two programs are split as Community Enhancement and Economic Development.
And I guess that's probably where I have an issue with even that as we're looking at it, because I don't know if it's some, a program I've never heard of or if it's just something that has been in-house to where maybe it has been done and it just hasn't been presented in a way that we would know that this is part of a community development program because, as I read, encourages public and private investment and to provide management services to developers and partners so they can create high-quality projects in the community. So again, as I look at that and the Economic Development Program, which I think we all try to understand how it is going to benefit your, your common person that wants to develop and not just hotels and bigger spaces. And again, the KIVA program, as I have referred to from the beginning, even when the, the conversation arose from the Economic Development Trust, we have been asking, and I'm still waiting for the information to understand who has benefited from this because clearly not, I don't know of a resident other than one that has probably benefited from this KIVA program. So again, there's no accountability for that. So you want a contract, I don't agree with that because in my opinion, this needs to be in-house, this needs to be something that our council can discuss because we approved money for it to go there. So therefore, we should have the accountability and the transparency and the openness to discuss it, to speak on it, and for it to be housed under our city structure if, again, we're looking at a community enhancement type of situation that we want for our city and our residents. So those, again, we've been going through this for months, and it's not as if I did not say or, and/or ask that this continuously be placed in our budget for the, for the coming fiscal year. So again, it's trying to work through those conversations of acknowledging and understanding who's benefiting from programs such as this because clearly, as I looked at the numbers even yesterday from a report that I get with my conversations from the Alliance, there were over 20 that were either withdrawn or rejected. There's over 60 still waiting in the wing to be funded. We don't have time for these kind of things because we have businesses closing every single day in order for us to assist in this minority business program, the Small Business Continuity Program is supposed to have wrapped up the end of May if I'm not mistaken. Is that true somewhat? From the conversation I had yesterday that they were trying to wrap all of those things up as of the end of May? So we, we still have some issues when it comes to, again, folks falling in the gap, the people who need it the most still not being able to benefit, and there's, again, no openness for us to understand what is happening in the process. So I want to continue to say, as we look at this budget, it's not just one thing, there are multiple reasons, especially from a council standpoint such as myself, asking for a small thing such as this to be added and amended to this budget for our next fiscal year. And I don't think it's that hard to do, especially now that we got, we have received, excuse me, quite a bit of money from the CARES Act in order for these things to be done, funded, and accounted for. So that's just what I have to say about that right now.
And I wanted to correct something that I said too, that I said we contracted with the Alliance for Economic Development. I actually think the contract on the KIVA program is with Progress OKC. So that was, that was my mistake.
Which, again, speaks to the lack of transparency of that program and Progress OKC, we, we have no oversight of Progress OKC. None.
We have a contract with them.
We still have no oversight over Progress OKC.
Just quickly, city manager, is this on, on the KIVA program? It's been something I've been listening back and forth, that conversation. So if your recommendation is that it exists under Progress OKC, then what, what is your recommendation then in terms of the accountability questions? And specifically, yeah, that's the first question, and then specifically, knowing the numbers of folk who haven't been able to access those funds, which I do remember that coming before council with its initial approval, so what can we do to make, ensure the program is available to those that the councilwoman is describing? And then what can we do to kind of address this accountability question if this is not housed under here, which I actually agree with Councilwoman Nice, I, I also would like to see it here. So that's my preference. If it's not, then I think Councilwoman Nice has raised some, I think, very serious inquiries for us. So what, what do we, what's our...
Yeah, so we have it managed through the Economic Development Trust. There's accountability within the contracts and responsibilities that are there, but we can certainly have a report come back to the council, and that's something that we've talked about. I know it's still getting started, but we can get, have a report come back to the council because one of the things is that the KIVA program is built on fundraising, and I know we had presentations previously, but it's built on the idea that funds are raised within the community, they do some crowdsourcing to try to help fund and fund within the community. So that can be an issue at times as well, but we can bring an update of where we are with the program and how much funding we have and what's happened with the program and really even what people can do, make sure that we're communicating what people can do to be able to apply for it.
That would be helpful. With which, with which level of frequency, and I guess it's more of a, from both Councilwoman Nice and you, like what would it, what would that need to look like to help, to help that transparency conversation would be my question.
Yeah, we can come back as frequently as we need to. I don't know that there's a lot that changes from week to week and even sometimes just month to month in a short period. So probably a longer period of like quarterly or biannually, we could come back and have a report that we bring back to the council.
I'd request at least quarterly, but prob, I mean, I'd want to hear what...
It needs, if that happens, it needs to be monthly. And, and to that point, because this is a crucial time of us trying to recover from what we are still experiencing right now across the country, especially in our city that has been hit very hard with small businesses, trying to either begin or recover or ending or trying to start back up. You know, it's all of those things. So again, when I speak of that KIVA program being housed, how, we spent over $100,000 that we were able to give to this, to this program to start it. I think we should have that accountability aspect for it to be in our budget as an item for the oversight as well.
Yeah, I just have some comments, I think. And I, I just have to assume that nobody in this room has not heard the phrase that budgets are a moral document, but I, the core of my comments are about that. But I, the core of my comments are about that. Beginning last year, we had, we, we were presented with an opportunity to really rethink collectively our definition of public safety. And when I look at this budget, I'm not seeing that we're meeting that moment. I can already see the social media posts that are going to have my face plastered on them that say, "Joe Beth Wants Crime to Run Rampant Throughout Oklahoma City." And that is not the case. I want effective public safety strategies for this city and for our residents. And I have two examples of what those look like. Unfortunately, neither are funded by the city. Social work, homeless outreach teams, two nonprofits in particular that I work very closely with and talk very closely with their staff on this, this, these programs they have, just one of them, I don't know about the other, but I recently have received a report that just one of them, since their beginning, just a little over a year ago, have housed 100 people straight off the streets. They have scrapped together resources from who knows how many sources of government, private funding, et cetera, to, to get folks who are ready, trusting, and that there's housing that is available. Unfortunately, vouchers are slim, wait lists are long, so those staff members, which I believe are three, have provided public safety for those 100 residents and anyone who might be calling crisis services for them or saying that they're trespassing, et cetera, and those folks being just wound through the system. The other one is a program funded by the Department of Mental Health that seeks to identify high utilizers of our crisis centers. So these are folks with severe mental illness, barriers to housing. Most of them have been experiencing homelessness because of this, these layers of barriers and their own illness. And again, program's up for a year. They have reduced return visits to the crisis centers for that group of people by 90, nine-zero percent. That program has saved the city money because cops don't have to respond to those folks when they're in a serious crisis. They don't have to go to the, the crisis centers only to be spat back out to the streets when they're stable and they're not at high risk. That's public safety. $300,000 is not a commitment to public safety for an alternate, well, at this point, we don't even know what kind of crisis response for mental illness. Especially right now, when we are on track to spend at least, if not over, $1 million on defending an ordinance that criminalizes poverty. That's, that's where our priorities lie, is in defending the criminalization of people who are at the margins. And that's the amount of money that we want to give to four different initiatives that, again, we don't even know what those recommendations will look like. But we know that they have been effective in other cities and that we, again, had a moment that we had the opportunity to meet with vision, imagination, creativity, and not on ideas that are just thrown out of thin air. They are ideas that have been proven in other cities and other communities. And just because those places aren't exactly like Oklahoma City doesn't mean we couldn't say, that can probably work here if it can work in Denver or Eugene or places in Kentucky that are doing the same thing right now. Some of you might not have heard the phrase that the safest communities aren't the ones with the most police officers, they're the ones with the most resources. I grew up in one of those communities. However, I went to, I went to school across town in a, in a community that did not have that and grew up with other students who had vastly different day-to-day experiences than I did. And not until I became an adult did I realize how vastly different those experiences were. And it was because my community, the community that my parents had access to, had an incredible amount of resources, a grocery store right down the street, public parks, well-programmed, good public schools. And my parents chose to send me across town because they didn't want me to sense that that was the only, only place, and they didn't want me, they didn't want me to have the sense that, that I was somehow better than those people across town. Because that's what explicitly my mother experienced growing up. So I'm just incredibly disappointed that this hasn't been something that has been prioritized collectively as a city. I appreciate all the work that our various task force and working groups have been putting into this. I know that there have been members of the community that have been extremely actively involved in those conversations, and I, and I know that they're going to be ongoing, and I appreciate all the staff time. Unfortunately, I just don't think it's enough. And I think that comes from a culture, again, collectively of city leadership who's just kind of shrugged her shoulders and decided, well, we'll just give them $1.3 million and tell them to move along and be happy because, because we did it. We did the thing. And it's the cases we haven't. We are continuing to decide that an institution that you can draw a direct line from today to racist slave patrols in the Reconstruction era is somehow the thing that is supposed to produce public safety for us collectively, and it's just not. And we know that, we have the data, we've seen it. But we just, we don't have the ears to hear it. And that's all I have to say.
Any other comments or questions?
If there aren't, if there is no one else from council, then I would like to both present something to us and then speak. And, yeah, so Boyd Fulton is going to pull this up first. Boyd, you can actually, it's at the beginning, as I mentioned earlier, but you can actually skip ahead to about 1 minute 20, and that'll skip the introduction. I want to thank everybody who is participating on Councilwoman Nice's Human Rights Commission. I want to thank everybody who is participating on Mayor Holt's task force to revisit de-escalation policies and police misconduct oversight when it comes to a citizens' review board. I'd like to thank the 12 members of the working group who are working alongside 21CP Solutions, the consultant, to study the six different proposals that we put forth last year to address public safety in imaginative new ways. So I'll begin there. I'll also say thank you to the residents who spoke for hours last year, hours. Y'all remember, other counselors, we sat here for hours, but not here. We sat at home because we were in the middle of a global pandemic. But for hours, we listened to resident after resident after resident call in and share their suggestions about the direction public safety should head in this new century. They shared, unfortunately, some experiences that I will never forget hearing. And those experiences that I heard shaped the six proposals that are found in our community policing resolution. So to the conversations with my fellow council members, starting with Councilwoman Nice, starting with Councilwoman Hammond, but quite frankly, beyond that, with other council members, with our chief of police, and this was also the result of attending, before the murder of George Floyd and Ahmaud, at my request, attending use-of-force training, trauma-informed police training, attending two police ride-alongs, again, all at my request promptly after taking office so that I could better understand what's happening in our neighborhoods and the role of law enforcement. The proposals we put forward are the result of that, but they're not just the result of that, they are the result of a history of this city that we do not learn in school and we don't talk about. So we're going to pull up a video here from the Neighborhood Alliance where they actually talk about, and it's about a 10-minute video, so I'm going to ask for your patience, but it's the history of race relations in Oklahoma City as it relates to our neighborhoods. Because I believe within that history, we will find why we are in this present moment, and we will find what is being asked of us in this present moment. And so rather than me speak to that history, I'm going to let one of our city and state's most acclaimed historians, Dr. Bob Blackburn, and fellow Ward II resident, let him share that with us, I think, once the internet gets us going here. Is it not working? I appreciate everyone's patience as we work through these technical issues right now. I just really think it's that important. So it won't be this, yes, it'll be episode two, and then you can actually just skip to about 1 minute 20, please. There you go.
"Lax, as you hear about the past, get a glimpse of the future and an eye toward Hello, I'm Dr. Bob Blackburn, Director of the Oklahoma Historical Society and a historian. As I've said before, I've written over 20 books now, been studying Oklahoma City history now for over 40 years. And what I'm doing now for the Neighborhood Alliance is to provide some of the basic building blocks that have affected the development of neighborhoods and impacted the quality of life in our neighborhoods. And Neighborhood Alliance, an organization that really has a mission for pulling us together for the common good, what is good for everybody, and how can neighborhoods be an important component of this formula for what is best for us now and in the future? I really wanted to talk about some of the forces that have shaped our neighborhoods. In the first section that I recorded earlier, we talked about transportation, boom of bus cycle, parks. Well, in this episode, which really goes from 1928 to 1970, I want to talk about race relations, architectural styles, and then the suburban movement of Oklahoma City. To really understand Oklahoma City today, you have to understand race relations. It has been part of our story. The date that we are recording this, we're still talking about the movement of Black Lives Matter. We can see that race is a major factor in American history, Oklahoma history, and Oklahoma City history. And it's not just a matter of voting rights or equality or protection from abuse and injustice. It is a part of how our neighborhoods have been shaped over the years. So to understand this, you have to go back to 1889 to 1910, which is the formative time period of Oklahoma City. And we are a southern state. In Oklahoma City, although we're created by a land of immigrants who came from every place, the southern story dominated our early history. So most of our early settlers came from the south. They brought with them their southern ways that were born in the age of slavery. They were incubated again in the age of Reconstruction and the Ku Klux Klan and a new form of slavery called tenant farming, sharecropping, denial of votes, the right to vote, the use of terrorism called lynching to suppress a population, to say, you have a place and it's separate from the majority. And so Jim Crow comes to Oklahoma City with our land of immigrant story that we'll get into in another episode, and segregation is the law of the land from the very beginning. Senate Bill Number 1 filed with the state legislature in 1907, when we first become a state, is a bill to segregate the races in transportation. We'll take that on, and that's used for everything, including neighborhoods. And in fact, by 1950, the Oklahoma City Council would pass an ordinance telling the people of the city, because of the pigment of your skin, and if it is of African descent, you can only live south of 8th Street and east of the tracks. And if your pigment is white and Caucasian, you cannot live south of 8th Street and east of the tracks. We are going to formally, legally, separate the races. Something has been pretty much de facto up to that point, and it's written into, into the covenants of most property lives. For example, I moved into Heritage Hills in 1978. When I read the abstract, it says in my abstract, you cannot sell this property to a person of, quote, color. So what had been de facto part of life becomes law. Well, it's struck down by the Supreme Court, but it expresses the will of the community, the majority. African-Americans could not serve on juries. The vote was suppressed. And so neighborhoods for African-Americans are segregated. And because of that segregation, it's limited. The first neighborhoods are where the white developers did not think white homebuyers wanted to buy their homes, which is along the river because it floods, and then mosquitoes in the days before air conditioning, it was just part of life. They didn't want to be around railroads because of the clattering through the night, the sounds of steam engines and the, and the noise of mechanics. And so the first African-American neighborhoods developed along the river on the east side in what we now call Bricktown. The first Douglas High School that's built is at the corner where the Bricktown Ballpark is now. And so that was the African-American community. There were jobs there. There were jobs at the stockyards on the south side, starting in 1909, where some of their skill sets would work, they were allowed to work, but they still had segregated neighborhoods. Well, as the population grows, the population of African-Americans in Oklahoma City has always hovered around 5% to 8%. So as Oklahoma City goes from 50,000 people to 200,000 people, the African-American population is growing. Well, where are they going to live? The first new neighborhoods for African-Americans start at the Santa Fe Tracks and go east down into the river. One reason the old main street of the African-American community is called Deep Deuce is that literally the roads go off of the edge of downtown into the river valley. And that is what we call Deep Deuce because it literally goes down, and those early neighborhoods would go down and terminate at the river. The first fairgrounds was at northeast 8th Street in what is now Martin Luther King, the old. the old eastern. Well, that was a white neighborhood at that time. The African-American population is growing and expanding east and pushing to the north. They couldn't push south because of the river. Where is the population gonna go? It starts going north, and it creates conflict for decades. Fortunately, we had leaders like Roscoe Dungy fighting back and saying, "No, this is not right." And he used a headline that I've always loved, I put it in one of my first books in 1982, "The Bloody Fangs of Jim Crow." What that was doing, not just to the African-American community, but to the entire community, by separating, creating fear and hatred, not allowing the talent of the African-American community, pushed the entire community forward, of not encouraging this sharing of ideas of culture and creativity in the schools. It had the effect of a form of cancer on our community. But it's pushing north, the city pretty much ignores the African-American community largely until the 1970s, when it begins to change as other things are changing. And so, when the water treatment plants are put in, we don't care how that impacts African-American neighborhoods, so it's built on the northeast side. When we have trash pickup and big depots, it's gonna be on the northeast side. But, there are people who stand up, they're the Edwards family. The Edwards, they had made a fortune collecting scrap metal, one of the few things that they were allowed to do in the community. Well, during World War II, suddenly there's a need for scrap metal, make a fortune. Well, the Edwards family, Platts Neighbors, the Edwards addition, they build Edwards Hospital, they build Edwards School, and they start saying, "If the community is not gonna help us, we're gonna help ourselves." But, all this time, the community is growing, changing, race relations begin to change nationally. Harry Truman, by 1946, would integrate the armed forces, did not happen during World War II, only after the war. Tinkler Air Force Base, with these new policies, will employ African-Americans. Suddenly, there's more opportunity, we get economic changes, the 60s, when we're all questioning, "Why have we always done things a certain way?", this period of change and reaction. We're seeing some of that right now with the reaction to Black Lives Matter, with people saying, "No, no, we need to go back to the good old days of the 1950s and Gone With the Wind as a model of the way society should be." It's happening in the 60s and 70s, but still, we get change, until we get desegregation of the schools, desegregation of housing, changes in the banking laws, where African-Americans can get loans to buy a house and get onto that first rung out of a cycle of poverty in building wealth, the ability to really change their lives. And so, by the 1970s, 80s, neighborhoods growing with integration built into it, no longer just segregated. This is an African-American community, this is a white community. Now, it's our community, it is an Oklahoma City neighborhood, begins changing. But, we're still dealing with the impact of all of those years, of injustice, of denial, of fear and hatred, of suspicion that the majority does not really care about us, they're gonna continue to suppress us, that we are victims. Well, how do we come together and say, "We're all in this together"? How can we go forward? That is dialogue, that is compromise, that is give and take of governance. Neighborhoods are a central part of that. How do we do it in our own neighborhood? How do we do it in the city? How do we all work together? We have a mayor right now, who has probably embraced that attitude greater than any leader we've had in Oklahoma City. We are on the cusp of a new age of tolerance, of understanding, of love for thy neighbor. And so, all of this has been an important part of our history, and it will be an important part of our future. Well, while all of this is happening with transportation, boom of bus cycle, with all of this, we're getting different...
I need to go on record and say I had no role in the constructing of that video, that's not why I'm in it. So, I made a list of things I need to say to help, kind of help think about this dialogue and this give and take. So, you just heard, and this is what we're gonna have right now, it's a bit of dialogue, and I really appreciate your patience as you listen to me. Just as the city of OKC is an entity, as you just heard from Dr. Blackburn, only in the 1970s, only in the 1970s does it start taking seriously this history, its black residents. That's the decade before I'm born, I'm born in 82, okay? So, do the math now, we're talking about barely 40 years, barely, of our city coming together to think of it as our community, our city, which means that everyone in this room right now, we are living through the Great Experiment. And that's a lot of pressure. We are living through it, and what happens next depends on every single one of us. This is not rhetoric, but it's a lot of responsibility. So, the good news is, is the city's moving in that direction. The bad news is, if we're talking about the 1970s, and I'm gonna quote from Steve Lackmeyer's "OKC Second Time Around", where he quotes from a former Ward 1 councilperson, IG Perser. So, think about it, we're about to make right some stuff in our city, but unfortunately, quote, "Downtown is dead," this is going into the 80s, "and we helped kill it. There is no major retail, no major attraction, and no place to eat." And now, back to Steve's words, "It's because the councilmen added, 'There were no people on downtown streets, because they were all in the tunnels of the metro concourse, and ultimately, we had done a poor job of redevelopment.'" Fast forward to 1989. So, if the city's trying to make things right, unfortunately, through the 70s and 80s, we couldn't pass a bond to repair the city's infrastructure. We did it, we kept trying to pass bonds for our roads, our bridges, our sewer, our fire, our police, we couldn't, it never happened, not for a lack of trying on the city staff's level, former city managers, et cetera, but we didn't pass it, it just kept failing. And this was during the bust of the oil from the Penn Bank moment. It took the people at the Neighborhood Alliance to do the following. Quote, "The next two requests to fund the city's infrastructure needs actually came from the community's citizens," and I think this is important, "who circulated petitions to get the elections called. The first measure asked voters to approve a permanent three-quarter cent sales tax to support the city's police and fire. Council members placed the item on a June 1989 ballot after receiving a 40,000 signature petition circulated by Oklahoma City's Neighborhood Alliance, from whom we just heard, asking for the vote. Organizers noted Oklahoma City, quote, 'called the shots in the election where the penny sales tax had just failed, but now they wanted a long-term solution,' said Debbie Blackburn, Director of the Neighborhood Alliance. And voters approved that permanent tax by a 2 to 1 margin. And that approval," hear me when I say this, "marked the first time in five tries that Oklahoma City voters were willing to approve a sales tax increase." You all know the rest, then the zoo did it. You know the rest of the story. Then, we did maps. The problem is, the problem is, we always tell the maps story. We tell the maps story, we tell about the boom and bust of the 80s, and then we tell how maps got us out of that. We don't tell the 10 minutes I just showed you. We don't tell that, we're not taught it in K through 12, it's not on our local news media, there's no documentaries floating around. I had to piece it together through Steve Lackmeyer's book, and ultimately, through the Neighborhood Alliance's documentary that they just did. It's important, then, that we realize that the work that citizens put in motion in 1989, when I was seven, we are in the sequel right now, because residents are asking for us to meet a moment again. They are asking us to not just undo that 100 years of awfulness, but unfortunately, as downtown was dead in the 70s and 80s, city after city after city across this country invested in a drug war that continued to demonize black people's bodies, told the rest of the community that black men are scary, black women are scary, Hispanic, Latinx, people are scary. That's what the drug war did. And suddenly, rather than treating addiction to crack, this new drug there in the 70s and 80s, instead of treating that as a disease, we treated it as a crime, as a moral individual failing. And we did not talk about how when you don't invest in someone's neighborhood, in their environment, that environment shapes who they are. When we don't invest in good infrastructure in our neighborhoods, and you just heard Dr. Blackburn describe the shape of our black neighborhoods historically, but when we don't invest in good sidewalks, good bike lanes, good streetlights, parks with recreation, when we don't invest in access to mental health care, we end up in the moment we're in right now, where unfortunately, black and brown people, according to Harvard, Penn Medicine, mapping police violence, The Washington Post, are three times more likely to end up dead in an encounter with law enforcement across this country. If you don't like those numbers, I don't either, and also know this might mean we need something we can't do at this council level, which is a national registry. Let's find out what the actual numbers are. We need a national registry. People with a mental health condition are 16 times more likely to end up dead in an encounter with law enforcement. I don't like those numbers either, particularly considering that two of the most recent ones occurred in Ward 2, Benny Edwards, the young man you heard from these public comments today staring up at the sky. "I am tired of the he said, she said, I am tired of the divisiveness, I want my neighborhoods safe, as safe as I can make them." You now know why, from that video, I am the first biracial or black person elected outside of Ward 7. It was by design, everybody, and the good people of Ward 2, a majority white ward, and also one of the most diverse wards in this city, sent me here because of my dedication to public education and my dedication to my students to make sure they grow up in those better environments. Those are the conversations we have. I am also the first openly gay council member, as you know, and you saw it again in that video. And let me tell you, in 1982, thank you, in 1982, unfortunately, the same year I was born, police used to brutalize LGBT residents. This is documented, we know what happened at Engels, we know Engels used to be raided, we know people used to be beat, and we know we've done better. So, the very fact that I am here as a teacher, a renter, a person of color, and an LGBTQ Oklahoman, defies this history that you've seen today. And that's because the people of Ward 2 are a majority good people. We are. And we're smart, and we're thoughtful, and we're able to listen to each other at length and not talk to each other in soundbites. And I'm tired of this idea that we have to speak to each other in political platitudes, y'all? Y'all, to everyone here who asked me to coffee, let's talk. Fellow council members, ask me to coffee, I will listen to you talk as long as you've just listened to me. But, the days of this bumper sticker, these issues are too complex for that. So, this is a stepping stone, as you heard, from one of our very brave young residents who spoke earlier. This is not the solution, this is but a stepping stone. The following six reasons are why I'm voting for this. One, an alternative response to mental health crises. Craig, I just have a quick question for you. I am to understand that this alternative approach that is in that resolution, a resolution that is a result of the people speaking last year, am I correct in understanding that this would be something outside of the iPads we've given for police? We're not gonna head more down that direction, we're still looking at what these different alternative, maybe it's the Kahoots in Oregon, maybe it's the Denver, or some amalgamation of that, but we're not talking about funding more iPads for police officers to do the sort of telehealth, or are we? Would you clarify, please?
Right, so this program, the intent is, I mean, one, you know, we didn't put it in the police department budget, because we didn't know exactly what the recommendation would be and how we would want to recommend moving it forward. And two, we didn't determine, predetermined that we would do it either with city personnel or with a contract, because we didn't know exactly what it would look like. So, it's clearly not fully evolved in terms of what the concept will be, but it is not the iPad program. Now, I support the iPad program, I think it's a very good program, I think it has, it's very effective, it's a good way for officers to have that connection in the field. That's not what this is. This is about some type of alternative response. I don't know exactly what that will look like right now, but it's some type of alternative response on mental health issues.
I really appreciate that clarification, because I think that's the sort of outside the box thinking that's gonna really help us meet this moment. Also, in those six items, remember, there is a Violence Interruption Program that would look at non-law enforcement, it would look at members of these communities that have so often been left behind, who will argue they feel overpoliced. And if you look at the city of Newark right now, their Violence Interruption Program, they're doing a lot of the work that someone like Paula Sophia used to do when she was out there in the Asian District, knocking doors, going to restaurants, businesses getting to know people, that's what these Violence Interrupters did. Y'all don't like crime? I don't either. Guess what? In Newark, homicides have dropped 50, 5-0%, 50%. One more time, homicides have dropped 50% in the city of Newark in just the last four years. Newark is experiencing a 30-year low in crime as well. Now, causality, right? Who knows exactly what we're doing to get it all right in Newark? Don't y'all want to see somewhere between where we are now and 50% reduction in homicides? Don't y'all want to see somewhere between where we are now and a 30-year low in crime? I do, I do. And that's what this resolution is calling for, alternative to mental health, number one, some sort of a Violence Interruption Program. Dallas just did it. This ain't unique to the coast, Dallas, Texas did it, we're better than Texas. You say it every year, "Do you football time?", I hear. So, you know, we also said all of our officers should have access to 24/7 mental health care because of the trauma, but guess what? There's trauma in our neighborhoods too, from the shootings, for decades. And the Violence Interruption Program can be a way to address that, and I look forward to our working group continuing their research into that to figure out how we can both help alleviate that generational trauma in our neighborhoods and address the public safety needs of this moment. We also talked about making sure all of our officers are crisis intervention trained, not just to check a box, but to make sure that they are truly prepared, because if we're gonna have police alongside these alternatives, we need to make sure we're doing the best to reduce harm, mitigate harm, reduce violence. We also said an expansion of our youth programs like FACT and PAL. And that is where I want to conclude. My students are not discipline problems, and I hear that phrase used to describe them so often. My students are kids who get kicked out of class, they go to in-school suspension, and in in-school suspension, where I taught, they go for a day or three, then they're back in the classroom, now they're behind. They feel dumb, they are not, but they think they are. And now, they're back in in-school suspension, and the cycle continues, and they're further behind, and they feel dumb. And a lot of this language from our very horrifying racist past of telling black and brown... And a lot of this language from our very horrifying racist past of telling black and brown kids they can't be lawyers, they can't be doctors, they can't be council members. That's in their heads still today. And too often, I have I have learned that the kids who fell through those cracks are the very ones who end up on our local news having committed a crime, now in jail in one of the states that incarcerates at the highest levels in the country. Or worse, they're dead. We have to meet this moment by undoing this rhetoric that says who black and brown people are. We've got to meet this moment by investing in alternatives to mental health. We've got to meet this moment by investing in a non-law enforcement approach to violence interruption and stopping the cycle of crime. Stopping the cycle of poverty. Were it not for this 1.3 million in this budget, I would not be supporting it. Because for too long, we've not funded public transportation and everything else the way that we should have. But this is a stepping stone. If anyone believes in the sort of programs I said, Tell them what you want. Tell them you believe in sending trained mental health professionals to respond to those in crisis. Tell them that. Because the protests were one thing, and now we're in the sequel. Now it's time to make your voice heard in the shaping of these actual policies. That's the next step. That's the next step and the work ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll say this again. I think to that point, we can, we can do more and we can do better pertaining to the things that have happened. And in watching that video, one important thing was left out. As we say, the word was said about bringing community and bringing a city. There was a thing called urban renewal that still separated the community and ripped the African-American community apart once more. So even with that, there was still a cost to the black community, regardless of how this city has and was built. I think it's, it's something also to realize and understand as we look at the re-engagement and re-establishment of a Human Rights Commission. The history of why it was disbanded in the first place was because of the fear of the LGBTQ community. That's why it was disbanded. So it's very timely, needed, and necessary for now. Not just for the efforts of LGBTQ community, but we've had others, we've heard from others from the disability community who are asking for equity when it comes to things. We've had and seen the effects across our country when it comes to Asian-American Pacific Islander communities. We've especially seen what happens pertaining to the African-American community and anyone of any other country or African descent or any type of disability or inequity when it, in relation to human rights and why that is needed. So let me say, I support wholly the efforts of a Human Rights Task Force, a Human Rights Commission, and the work that's been done from our city and from our co-chairs to get us to this point. We can still do better. When I think of and received information, when we heard our police department presentation about the Violent Crimes Apprehension Team, the VCAP program, my question was, okay, there's zero complaints, but how many uses have we had of excessive force? There have been two. It had not been said, but there has been excessive force used even in those instances. And right now, as we have a reckoning in the black community with police and police relations, it's very difficult for me to understand the fact that I've been in office since November of 18. And we at the Spring Lake Division are on number seven of majors commanding officers at that department, in that division. Number seven. So how can we reckon anything, any type of community effort, if we're continually being pushed around in a lot of aspects as far as folks coming in one door, out the door the next month? There's no stability to start that conversation. And that's a problem. That's a problem for me because we have to continue to start the process over again instead of having the ability to create better relationships for those officers in our community. So by the time I'm telling someone, well, you should call Major So-and-so, that's the commanding officer, they've changed. And I barely even know it. I just found out about the latest one that came because I called the former one and he let me know that he was no longer there. So those are, those are issues for me in the relation of how we work together with community and policing. And also, again, with the impetus of how our community continues to say they are overharassed and overpoliced. And the fact that, again, because of a high-speed chase, we have two young boys who no longer have a mother, that she had just dropped them off. And I know they planned on seeing their mother again that afternoon and an unborn child. So there are some great concerns as we're looking at a lot of the things that we have to do to do better, to create better relationships. It's about relationships. We have to create better relationships. I know, as we heard, even the history of how policing came to be on the efforts in the heels of reconstruction and slave patrols to us to get here now. It's also to the point where you have folks who are from the African-American community who are looked down upon if they apply to be a police officer because of the difficulty of the role, the difficulty of being able to work through the confines of being African-American and wanting to protect and serve your community. So I know, again, when it comes to these programs, what we're wanting to see, we can do better. We have to do better. If we continue to say we want a one OKC, let's make a one OKC because we haven't quite yet gotten, haven't yet gotten there. But we can. It's going to take a lot of work. And I just think as we continue to look at this budget and the things that have taken place and the things we're going to have to continue to go through, there should also be some clear itemized from our, in the future, for our budgets, clear itemization of every single thing that we are looking at because this is just a generalization. And this gives us no, nothing in concrete that we probably need to understand. Just as I had to ask a question about a community enhancement program that I'm still, still confused about, by the way. And the fact that, again, we rely on partnerships from other outside entities instead of holding ourselves accountable with a program such as the Kiva program. And I'm very disappointed that it is not in this budget. And I will not be supporting this budget because of that, among other factors that I, I have a problem with in, in this budget itself. So that's where I am. And I, again, it's not as if I just brought this up today that, oh, I want to see this. It has been continuous since the beginning. And it was continuous when we had to defer it from the Economic Development Trust conversation. And I will continue to say that it has not benefited anyone that I know from my community as of yet, which is a very huge problem for me in this program with our dollars going to say we're supporting something in this effort. That's a problem.
Okay, any other comments or questions on item nine N two? If not, we could take a motion. And Mr. City Manager, again, I know I speak for everyone regardless of how they're voting and thanking you for all the hard, all the hard work that goes into, sorry, this collar's just too tight. I really didn't choke up on that. It's all the hard work that goes into this. You know, you have, you and your team, I know. It's basically a never-ending process. It will begin again essentially on July 2nd for many people in, on the city staff. And I know we're, we're all grateful for that.
And I appreciate that. And I appreciate the acknowledgement of all the staff work that goes into this because so many people work through this. Doug and Brent, I appreciate their efforts and their presentation and their effort in putting this together and leadership in this. But all throughout the city, there's city staff that work on the budget. And I really appreciate that acknowledgement.
Thank you. All right, well, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. You already spoke on this item. We're still on that same item. I can't access it, but I wish to vote aye. All right, budget passes seven to two. All right, we're moving on now to nine O, one and two. So nine O one is a public hearing regarding appropriations for the fire department for fiscal year 2021, 22. Has anyone signed up to speak? No, that's not for that. If no one signed up to speak, we'll move on then to nine O two, which is the resolution to be introduced today. This is not final hearing. This final hearing will be on June 22nd regarding appropriations for the fire department. And I believe we have a presentation.
Yes, so Doug Dall, our budget director, will give a quick presentation on this resolution. It aligns with the budget that's being adopted. This is just an additional requirement on these public safety sales tax funds.
It was a three-quarter cent sales tax supporting police and fire. The first item is related to the fire expenditures for the coming year. All of these projects that are listed here are allowable under the ballot language that was contained in the, in the election. And this does account for all 47-plus million dollars of the fire sales tax budget. You can see here the list of projects. I won't go into detail about those. We can answer any questions you have about those if you'd like. But this authorizes expenditures. At the end of the coming fiscal year, we will put together a report. Each year, we put together a report on what was actually spent to make sure it complied with this resolution. The auditor's office then reviews that report, and it is presented to council usually around December when we will give a report on how the expenditures actually occurred each year from the fire and police sales tax to make sure they complied with these resolutions.
And just for clarity, so we just passed the budget, so it can be a reasonable question. Wait, what is this? So this is specifically related to a public safety sales tax that was passed by the voters and dedicated to public safety in what year again?
1989.
1989.
Yeah. So yeah, again, this is, and under the ballot, it authorized specific expenditures related to police and fire. And this resolution is just to make sure that the, those expenditures do comply with the ballot that was approved by, by the residents to make sure that everything that's spent there is appropriate.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Doug? If not, I believe we could entertain a motion for adoption, or I should say introduction of item nine O two. You are not on this one. This is the fire department. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we are on nine P one, and we did have one person who has signed up to speak, and he knows it. And that is Michael Washington. This is the public, public hearing regarding appropriations for the police department for fiscal year 2021. Again, related specifically though to that police, public safety sales tax of 1989. Go ahead.
Yeah, 89, 89. Well, why don't we take that proposal back? This police department does not deserve any kind of accommodations, respect, or honor. Let me say, everyone, I do not have a heart-hearted substance against the police force. Everybody need police, we know that. But we do not need monies being appropriated already in 1989. Watch your jingle and jangle. Now you want to give them some more with this new budget that's coming out too. Now come on, y'all. Do y'all think everybody's stupid? You got a 1989 resolution that's passed giving this money? As he say, he went to fire departments. Come on now, let's keep it. Where is this money trail going to then? Now you got a new budget now for fiscal, was it 2023, 2022, 2023? Now you want to give them more than $200 million to come out here and to basically kill me because I'm a blackface? Everybody know Michael Washington has been very calm, unique when it comes to approaching people. He is not an immediate threat to anyone, nor does he advocate violent behavior. But that don't mean a damn thing to these people. Because when me being a blackface walk out in the black community, or even a Nazi sidewalk, come and say downtown, they say, where the go that nigger? That nigger Michael Washington come in here? That's right, ain't gonna bite my tongue because I know how these fools think. Yeah, damn police patrol shit. Excuse my expression here. Let me try to calm down here after hearing this Malachi up here today. Now then, I know that there's slave patrols. I know about these black codes. And I know this infrastructure is still going on around here today. That's why you have majority of white folks running everything. That's why you have white police officers, maybe a handful of blacks, Hispanics, or whatever. Come on, man, really? That's why you go to your Klan meetings and things around these institutions that we don't see out forward, but clandestinely. That's why you have these police agencies like this fake fraternal order of police. A private citizen want to tell an entity that's supposed to be for the people what they can or can't do. We got the chief of police himself who's in this fraternal order of police and told what he must can or can't do by them or else we remove our support from you. Do what you want, Chief Gorley, which I have no respect for. You hear me? None.
30 seconds remaining.
Oh, come on, now it can't have been three of them. That dog going quick, I'm just getting started. I'll take it this time. Why don't we? Now then, let me go on and conclude here. Yo, this is this fiscal ordinance for this crap here? Again, I respect, I don't disrespect any people up here. But this is crap, and this resolution not be passed as fiscal here for July 6th. I will be back. I'm going to let everybody know what I think about it because I ain't have time to get it like I want to today. Have a good day.
All right, that concludes the public hearing on nine P. And now we're at nine P two. Resolution to be introduced and set for final hearing on June 22nd regarding appropriations for the police, police department for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Do we also have a presentation on that?
Yes, this is likewise for that other half of the three-quarter cent sales tax. This is the portion that applies to police. And again, this details the types of projects, the things that they can spend their 47 and a half million dollars on. All of the projects listed here encompass all of the dollars in the police sales tax budget. Again, the majority of that is for the officers that were funded through the police sales tax. The other projects, again, are listed here. There's a number of them. But again, they support the purposes behind the ordinance that was adopted by the residents in 1989. And again, we will be reporting on this the same way we do fire and police each year in terms of making sure that the expenditures comply with this ordinance.
All right, any comments or questions for Doug? Okay, well, we could entertain a motion then to introduce the resolution. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we're at nine Q. Nine Q one is claims recommended for denial. Staff has not requested an executive session, so we could entertain a motion to proceed. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Ten A is claims, or ten A one, I should say, is claims recommended for approval. Staff has not requested an executive session, so we can approve the claims if council so desires. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11, items from council. We have two items of business here. Let's address those. let's address those, and then we can go around the horseshoe. Eleven A, ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing on June 22nd, final hearing on July 6th. We've actually seen this once before, I believe, Councilman Stone, when we referred it to the planning commission, you can tell us how that went, but today's consideration is merely to introduce it, as you see, it will go through the usual ordinance cycle of at least three meetings of consideration. Councilman Stone.
Yeah, so you'll recall, this did make it through the planning commission, the, the recommendation for approval. I found that trailer houses weren't considered a dwelling based on our current ordinances, and, you know, in my opinion, whether you live in a trailer house or a big fancy house, you should have those, those same kind of rights on your property that should be afforded to anyone else. So I requested the staff that they produce this ordinance, they have, and we're adding trailer houses to a dwelling. If no one has any questions, I'll move for approval.
Todd, could you just give me a few examples of what you're referring to in terms of rights that previously or prior to this resolution?
Absolutely. So I know Councilman Mcatee had one issue, but I can, I'll certainly share with you the details of mine. It was out in a rural area, the people lived on a trailer house, had been there a long time. Believe a new family moved in next door and erected a chicken coop, basically on a property line within probably thirty feet of that trailer. Well, you can't do that, that close to another dwelling. And that's when we figured out, well, it's not a dwelling, it's a trailer house, and it's like.
Okay.
No, it's a, people live there, it's a dwelling, so that was the reason that kind of initiated this whole thing.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So I'll make a motion.
Okay, let's get a motion for introduction. Got a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and so that will have a public hearing at our next meeting and a final hearing on July 6th. Item eleven B is a resolution approving a request by Ward Eight City Councilman Mark Stonecypher to name the pavilion in Verdafe Rex Quail Creek Park the Mike McAuliffe Pavilion in honor of the late Mike McAuliffe, former Oklahoma City civic leader and volunteer. Councilman Stonecypher.
It is an honor to bring this resolution to the council today. For those of you that did not know Mike, we lost him late last year to COVID. He served as chief of staff to two Oklahoma City mayors, Ron Norick and Andy Coats, but as many knew him, and one of the favorite, my favorite comments that I read was, he was the biggest cheerleader of our city, and he loved this city. He was active on several different levels. He ran and started the Christmas Boat Parade, Navy Days, the city's Jazz Festival, and the Oklahoma City BBQ competition. He did the drag boat races on the river. There are many, many things that he did that no one will ever know about. His sister, Deborah McAuliffe-Siner, who we all know from Allied Arts, is here today, and I'd like for her to come up and just say a couple of words about Mike, if you wouldn't mind.
Hi, Deborah. Thank you, Councilman Stonecypher, for saying that. Hello, Mayor, Council. Certainly very emotional about this, and I wasn't prepared to speak, but I must, for my brother, not only his service to the city as chief of staff for mayor and city council, but also serving many years for our public inebriate alternative, and he was very devoted to that cause, and many of the items from his home were donated to that cause as well. Mike would be thrilled with this honor of the pavilion being named for him. He was a resident in, in that area and participated in the Quail Creek Parade, bringing those free events to the community, was always one of his major driving factors, is having free events that everyone could attend. As Mark said, the cheerleader for the city, the doer, trying to connect people, and just always trying to make it a better place. So I'm so much in favor of it. Thank you.
And the one thing I'd say, if Mike were here today, he was a big rotarian. He had a perfect record of attendance, and if I wouldn't have said that, he'd been disappointed. And so Mike was a dreamer, Mike was an advocate, but he was a friend to so many people, so I'm honored to move this item.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Deborah, for joining us, and we think this is a very fitting honor for Mike, and thank you, Mark, for bringing it before us. Okay, well, now we can go around the horseshoe, we'll just take it in order. Word one?
I'm good, Mayor, thank you.
Word three?
I'm good, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, word four?
I'm good, thank you.
Word five?
Uh, yes, Mayor, just one comment, have it through the budget. I would like for the city manager to consider.
In terms of, of looking at a office, well, not an office, I'm not asking that we hire somebody, but that we put together a committee of, for the innovation and technology development within the city, and it would include members from all parts of the city's operations, including police, fire, but all of them, traffic, the utilities, and it's not just focusing on, on computer systems and things like that, but when I was doing some research recently, it's amazing what municipalities are doing in terms of technology and innovation in all aspects, and I think if we don't make a concerted effort to, to address that, then what happens? We just rely upon salespeople as they come along, you know, and try to sell us some new technology, some new innovative ideas, and I think we can do better than that and, and be on the cutting edge of the development of that, but bring in members from throughout the city to serve on that committee, and maybe they meet once a quarter or something, but one of their goals, who's ever a part of that, is to monitor developments within their particular department, and then see, would that make sense to bring to the city, and we're seeing things like with robotics, autonomous systems, identity analysis, predictive analytics, all sorts of things that make operations of city government that much more efficient and effective, and, and the citizens are ultimately the beneficiaries of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Word six?
Uh-uh.
Word seven?
Yes, I have a few things, and I, I actually wanted to ditto what I just heard from councilperson Greenwell, especially in the efforts of Innovation District, and we should be partners, not just have other entities telling and really predicting what's best for our community and our city, if we're not at the, at the helm and at the table, more so than anyone else. All the partners, I know we're, we're a partner, but I think we could be a more invested partner when it comes to what we're expecting and looking for pertaining to that particular district, and the money that we have earmarked through MAPS four especially. I think we should have a lot more conversations about how our city is engaged in that process. Also, as we're discussing that, I'm still waiting to understand our Neighborhood Conservation Committee and the re-establishment of it, waiting for it, not sure where it is in the process, but I hope we can get it going as soon as possible in relation to esp, the, a lot of the things that I heard today with this 108 loan program, HUD programs, all of the things that would be encompassed with the Neighborhood Conservation Committee and, and how, how we work through those confines. I do want to mention, the Northeast Farmers Market is now officially ready for everyone to come and, and to patron. They had their first official Saturday opening on June, this past Saturday, June 5th, at Pitts Park, so they will be there through October, if I'm not mistaken, and they're gonna have a lot of programming to go along with the farmers' market as well, so we're extremely excited that they are back with us at Pitts Park. It was the best location they ever could have been replaced to, and our, our city so graciously agreed to house them once more, so I do want to say thank you to our Parks Department for helping us to get them a home once again this year in the summer for the Northeast Farmers Market. And I also want to extend my sincerest gratitude to every, everyone from our city that played a role in our job, community job and resource fair from this Saturday. It was a tremendous attendance from our city, as far as the support from our city. This is our first one, so I think because we changed the date, we probably didn't get the attendance we wanted and desired, but at the same time, our city departments were there, and we were able to meet a lot of folks that are a part of our staff that some of us probably had not interacted with prior to, but we had a lot of vehicles from the Parks and Recreation Department, the Utilities Department, we had Waste Management. I'm, I know I'm gonna say, I'm gonna leave departments out, but just for them to bring their big trucks for people to see and, and understand that these are all a part of, of our city operations, I, I just want to say again, from the bottom of my heart, my sincerest gratitude to every single department and everyone that was a part as far as our patrons that came and our vendors, so we had other city folks that are establishing in the ward. I know a few months ago, we had, we talked to Cork and IDEX and, and talked about getting those jobs into our community, and so he asked me, how can he do that? So it was this type of event that he was able to attend, and gathered some quality applicants, so we're thankful that we were able to move in those first steps. So we're gonna do it again, and we're not gonna change the date, so whether the sun shines or it rains, we're not gonna change the date, we're gonna make sure that it's, we stick to that date. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you. Also want to thank Ms. Debbie, because this was an idea, and she helped me turn it to a reality, and it was, again, a beautiful occasion for us to have it in, at Douglas, and special thanks to Mr. Garcia at Douglas, he's over the Field House, he operates that, so he's, he managed and, and helped us to make sure it was an effortless event as far as just being able to maneuver the tables and the chairs and the things that we needed for the operations of that. So again, I just, I can't express my thanks enough, because it means a lot when you do have support of pertaining to the staff and those who are a part of our city staff that come from the community, that want to be at the table as well, to engage with other members that are from our, our community. Last Monday, I was able to travel to Tulsa to commemorate the centennial of the, the Tulsa Race Massacre, and clearly, it was a rainy day one, but I think that was very befitting for the occasion, because we are still mourning the folks that we have yet to, to know their names and, and find, to have proper burials for. But I do know and understand that this, that same week, that Wednesday, that Tulsa did pass a, a resolution unanimously, and based some of their words from the resolution that we were able to present in April. So thank you again to our city council for saying yes unanimously to support reconciliation, conversation, and being able to reckon with where we move forward with, with what happened in Tulsa, and it's unfortunate that even as we listen to the, the words of Dr. Blackburn, and talking about the many documentaries that I've been watching all weekend based on the Tulsa Race Massacre, that now we have a, a critical race theory concept, that you can't even talk about it further than where it goes. It's just quite ridiculous to me, in order for us to reckon with the, the conversation of where we need to be. A couple of other things, oh, Mayor, have you went to ski yet?
Not, no.
If you hadn't heard, you can ski in your shorts now at Ski OKC in the River Sport area, so I plan on doing that, and I hope you, just something different. I think it's really interesting how we have all of these different concepts that now, especially in the Boathouse District, we're able to accommodate so many different folks and, and ways of life, so I, I do encourage people to, to experience that, and I know for our communities, there's a group called Stop the Violence that is hosting young people for free to be able to go down and experience the Boathouse District and the River Sport Adventures, so I know they're going to have a very good time down there experiencing that part of our river, and also understanding the history of that part of our river, too. As we look at and heard about Juneteenth, we are looking, I think by the time we have our next council meeting, it would have come and gone, but I do want to continue to mention Juneteenth. As we look at Juneteenth, the history of it, with the Emancipation Proclamation being signed in eighteen sixty-three, the word getting to Galveston Island in eighteen sixty-five, but the story does not stop there, even though the history books say so. So I guess this may be something that we need to continue to talk about clearly as well. The story stops in Oklahoma in eighteen sixty-six, with the peace treaties being signed. So that is where we celebrate Juneteenth. It started and finished in Oklahoma, for us to be able to really tell and recognize that story of why it is important for Oklahoma and Oklahoma City and surrounding areas to support the holiday of Juneteenth. And Juneteenth on the east is gonna happen on Northeast Twenty-third Street on Rhode Island, that area, from 3:00 PM until 9:00, so we do hope, June nineteenth, that some of you will come out and join us and get to experience our community for Juneteenth, and we're gonna have music, fun, information, programming, all the things that, that bring for a community festival. And I know some young ladies, with Unique as you are, they're hosting a 5K, so if you are one of those people, you like to run or walk, they'll take your ten dollars, and you can come and, and start a team. I have my tennis shoes, so I'm ready, and that's going to be that morning, I believe, in Edwards Park area, so we do look forward to that. And this Saturday, don't forget, Dead Center Film Festival is gonna be held at Booker T. Washington Park, so they're showing a couple of films. I know one, they're showing one based on the Oklahoma City Thunder and the day that our city shut down, what happened, and I remember that day like it was yesterday, because I was at that game, and it's something I will never, ever forget. I'm sure a lot of you who were watching or were there will never forget that moment either, but it talks about just that process from there to what happened, and how the, the Thunder had to continue to operate and, and try to make it work. So looking forward to that documentary, and the, the Seoul documentary that's also going to happen afterwards, and so they're gonna have some live artists there from about six, so I'll have my chair waiting for you. Councilman Stonecypher, we're gonna sit next together and, and enjoy some good sounds and music. So those are the things that are happening in Ward Seven, and looking forward to seeing all of you real soon.
Ward eight?
Thank you, Eric. Um, I just wanted to thank Eric Winger, Public Works staff, the council today.
Is your mic on, Mark?
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I wanted to thank Eric Winger, his staff with Public Works, also the council for accepting the complete enslating library sidewalk, residential sidewalks around there, and the pavement repairs that occurred. It's a wonderful pathway for our kids and our families and our seniors to now walk to the library, and so I'm really excited that it's been completed. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes items from council. Item twelve, a city manager reports. Mr. City Manager?
We do not have
Item 13 is Citizens to Be Heard. For all those who I call up to speak, if you would please just state your name and address, and then keep your remarks to three minutes or less. We'll start with Brenda Loggins.
Good morning.
Good morning. Afternoon, actually.
I'm Brenda Loggins, 3954 North Coast. And I'm here today to advocate for our youth. I'm asking for funds for our youth. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I was told if I came along, you wouldn't hear me. But I ask you to carefully listen to me. Our youth, along with so many of us, have been traumatized, isolated from family and friends, and shut in over this last year. It is now summer, and our youth are not going to stay in. And I'm scared to death, because they've been emotionally, mentally traumatized, our youth. And it's our responsibility to take care of them, and that is to keep them safe from death and criminal activities. And if we don't have a plan in place right now, because they're not going to stay inside this summer, there's going to be a lot of 911 calls. I've heard about, you know, money this morning, I've heard about the police this morning, and I'm talking about both of them. So you get to hear just a little bit more. But I'm a member of the health community. I'm a retired school nurse. And our number one priority is to save lives. And that's why I'm here this morning, to put it on your minds and your hearts, that our kids have been shut up, but they're out now. And if we don't have a plan for them, there'll be a lot more 911 calls. We have a small opportunity before they go back to in-school, and we want every single child to be able to go back to school safely. But our number one priority during this window of opportunity is to keep them alive from COVID, guns, suicide...
Thirty seconds remaining.
...getting in trouble. What should we do? I ask you to look at the people, the services and programs that have come before you for funds carefully. Our children is the most valuable resource we have, and we need every single one of them. So I ask you, the mayor, council members, to please provide funds to prevent deaths and criminal behaviors in our children this summer. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jess Eddy?
I just wanted to draw any council members who aren't aware of the two situations. One's kind of broke on social media, and mainstream hasn't really picked it up yet. But the Nazi, the guy with the swat stick on his desk at OKCPD, who these guys stood up for, and that the police department stood up for, and then he was moved to Spring Lake, needs attention. Another issue that you rarely see get out, but I think speaks to, one of the problems that's much harder to access and prove about what OKCPD does, and cops really nationally, but these guys in concert with the administration, is this. This is a public document that's being filed in all cases in which a Oklahoma City Police Detective Brian Carter is in any way involved in witness. He's an investigator. He happened to be the investigator who investigated the homicide of Benny Edwards and provided sworn statement, affidavit testimony, which is what a district attorney uses to base a charging document on and file a charge against somebody. So on February 24th, Brian Carter of this year signed a sworn affidavit testifying under oath the facts that he could testify to about what happened. On March 1 or 2, or wait, on February 24th, the same day, Prater charged this Clifford Holman, OKCPD cop, with murder, manslaughter in the second degree, for killing Benny Edwards. February is a short month. Less than a week later, and I'll read verbatim, "On Tuesday, March 2, 2021, Detective Brian Carter met with Oklahoma County District Attorney David Prater. The meeting was requested by Carter and occurred in the offices of the DA. Carter immediately advised DA Prater that he could not stand by what he alleged in the affidavit sworn in the Holman investigation. Specifically, Carter related, 'He did not believe that Officer Clifford Holman's gunshot that killed Benny Edwards was unnecessary, though that was what he wrote and swore to in his affidavit.' When asked, Carter stated that he did not believe what he wrote to be true at the time he wrote it and swore to it. No further explanation was given." It's a little confusing. This will be publicly available soon, and you can find it on my Twitter accounts soon. But he just went into the district attorney's office and said, "I committed perjury." Now, we know that these guys told him to do that, but you should be asking a question and investigating this, because this is a crime and an attempt to gut the murder charge, to take out the lead investigator whose sworn statement gave the foundation to bring these murder charges. This is corruption, and this happens every day in that courthouse. Look into it.
Jasmine Brown-Jutress?
Thank you. My name is Jasmine Brown-Jutress. The address again is 4101 Northwest 51st Street. I did not intend to come back up here today, but after the video that Councilman Cooper showed today, it re-energized me again. There were some things the first time that I didn't have a chance to say, and I was like, maybe I should say that. And then I sat, and I thought, you all hear from people every day, and I wonder how much goes in one ear and out the other, because you're sitting here for hours, and I just, I just sit and wonder. So I want to tell you a little story. As a child, I was fascinated by government, very much so. If I had the opportunity to sit right there in Councilman Carter's seat, wouldn't have known who you were. I would have been honored. I touched the chair. Yes, I touched the chair. I got to see what they do. Oh my, I saw the computer. I was fascinated with the idea of government and how it worked. As an adult, that's what led me to advocacy. I wanted to know more. As an adult, I learned more and more and more about this process, and the more I learned, the less I was encouraged. Because I learned that there were things happening behind the doors and behind scenes that I knew nothing about. I, it saddens me to see that the officers have left the room. I'm glad that you guys are still here to hear this, because I would hope that you take this to the department as well. You have power. Every single one of you have power. Councilman Carter, I live in your, in your ward. You have power. Cooper, you have power. Young, Stone, City Manager Freeman, you have powers that the city does not even realize that you have. You have the power to change things in Oklahoma City. Mayor Holt, Greenwell, Hammond, Nice, Stone Cypher, you guys have power to do something. You have the power to either continue to herd marginalized groups like they did in this video. They've been herding marginalized groups around the city to do whatever they please. Or you can collaborate and have conversations with folks in your ward. You can collaborate and make things happen in the city. You have that power to choose. You have the power to continue to fear black people in my skin and implement and support policies and ordinances that endanger my life. Or you can choose to take that power and continue work that could help to grow progress on the cusp in which we heard in this video.
Thirty seconds remaining.
You have the power to either hide from the citizens in your ward, or you have the power to face the problems in your ward that are being inflicted by the police department, or even inflicted in other areas of our government, that you have a power to either hide from those problems, or you have the power to do your job. You are not exempt, Carter, Young, Stone, Greenwell, and Stone Cypher. You are not exempt. The people who talk to you guys every day and lobby to you, those are the ones who support you every day. But I live in your ward. I live in your ward. I am not the average person that talks to you every day and got you into that seat. There are more people who are like me. The community that I live in is a community full and diverse with ideas and thoughts and ways to progress Oklahoma City. You have the power to either ignore them or to do your job. And I'm urging you, please, please, do your job and serve the people as counselors, as officers, as the mayor, as the manager. I am urging you, please. I sit on these meetings with you guys. I listen to you. I have conversations. I'm willing to continue to have conversations, but not if there's not action when you do your job and serve your people. Thank you.
Michael Washington?
After having to follow an actor like this, it would be almost preposterous to even think so. However, let me, if I can, talk about March 27th, 2021. The family of Curtis Buff Williams said, "Mr. Michael Washington, we need you to put this man's story out to the public, because we know only you, only you, is going to put it down like it needs to be done, not skating on barbed wire fence." Now then, you had a racist, no-good police department through the engagement of a worthless chief of police, Wade Gorley, who had the audacity to get on nationwide television, especially here in Oklahoma, and say, "Well, let's take the screen here and show y'all why we had to go in and murder Curtis Buff Williams." Really? This no-good, racist, white supremacist police department headed by one of the Ku Klux Klan members, I believe in my heart, went in, and it didn't even give this man any notification, any chance to let the hostages go. "We had to go in there, let y'all can see they doing this to him." They said, "Come on, man, really?" "No, sir. The county sheriff's department was in there before you. You were called in there. They didn't find it necessary to take him out. Not one time when you walked in the door with your goon squad, your perfect gangsters known in the United States. You have two clowns pull their guns out, okay? You don't say, 'Hold up, Mr. Williams, we're coming in now. We need you to let the hostages go.'" No, 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 no. They raised their weapons up so calmly, so smoothly, so collectively, "Okay, here's another end we finna take out this morning, this afternoon, this evening, excuse me. We're going to take this young man out as a measure to let black folks know that you take one of our people hostages, we gonna get you." That's all that was. And, Mr. Freeman, sir, I have no disrespect for you, but you have the power, you hire that dummy? No, I shouldn't talk to that man. Like, I mean, I'm in a public set. Y'all, I'm just a little upset. But Wade Gorley has to go, man. This man is a puppet for these people here who's under a threat that if you don't act right, Wade Gorley, we will remove our support from you, and you will no longer be a part of the Fraternal Order of Police. Now, we say, "Yes, Mr. Washington, we got blacks on it, you got Hispanics on the Fraternal Order of Police, because it's just an organization fraternity." But that doesn't mean they're not racist. They're covering up so that nobody won't see how racist they are in reality. That's all, sir. As a matter of fact, if that were not so, they would stand up and fight for people. Not one of them came out and said, "Watch this here. You ready for this one?" Quote, unquote. "Well, we support David Prater filing the charges on these officers, and yet they were wrong." Watch it, Michael, quiet! I wonder, are they still a part of the Fraternal Order of Police? Yes, they are. Why? Because you went up against our group. You went against our order. You went against our establishment. So we are letting you know that, Mr. David Prater, even though you filed charges on our officers for killing Benny Edwards, Stavion Rodriguez, what, listen now. Everybody knows little Stavion Rodriguez, 13, little, little kid, having murdered people, all kind of brandishing weapons at him, because they said, "Drop your weapon." And he goes to his back pocket, "All right, y'all, alarms are killing. That's what we want." Come on, man. It has to be. The Establishment Order of Police here needs to be totally revamped. It needs another police chief. It needs to be disbanded. Why don't we take measures from what Norman Police Department's going through? The normal citizens tonight going to be saying, "Oh, no, we gonna cut some more of that budget." And because of that budget cut...
Mr. Washington, you're at four minutes. I tried to show you a little grace.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Have a great day. I'll be back.
All right. Thank you. All right. That concludes Citizens to Be Heard, which brings us to item 14, adjournment, and we are adjourned.